Hillsborough County has launched its redesigned website, hcfl.gov. The new domain boasts a variety of improvements to searchability, page layout, navigation, and website speed. The revamped website features robust search functions, making it easier for users to find the information they need. Whether searching for essential government services, paying water bills, accessing event information, learning how to acquire a new trash can, or identifying evacuation zones, the enhanced search functionality ensures quick access to relevant content. Hcfl.gov's new design features a clean, modern, and intuitive layout. The streamlined design enhances user-friendliness for easy navigation and access to important resources. Navigating the website is now more straightforward than ever. Users can seamlessly move between different sections, departments, and services while interacting with information and resources. Ready to see what all the fuss is about? Head to hcfl.gov and discover your best source for all things Hillsborough County.
Psst, hey, would you do me a favor? Grab your phone or smart device and open up that camera. Then point it right here at the QR code. Do you have it? I'll wait a second. When you see the link pop up on your screen, give it a tap. You ready? Boom! Welcome to the Hillsborough County official YouTube channel. We've got all sorts of videos here, all about what makes our community such an awesome place. From local events and community highlights, to what's in the perfect Cuban sandwich, we've got it all. We're always adding new things, so while you're here, be sure to subscribe and hit that notification bell so you'll never miss a new video. Here's that QR code again, just in case you missed it. Go ahead and check it out. Ooh. This must have fallen out of that video. This really is the perfect Cuban sandwich.
Good evening, and welcome to the Thursday, May 9, 2024 Comprehensive Plan Public Hearing. This is the first public hearing of three, I guess two hearings and one workshop that we'll have this evening. The Board of County Commissioners will consider, first, the transmittal amendments to the Comprehensive Plan, and the adoption of amendments to the future land use map of the Comprehensive Plan, as well as concurrent application for zoning of properties that are the subject of these map amendments. So this time, I'll pass things over to the Planning Commission, who began with the first item.
Yes, sir, thank you, Melissa Leinhart for the record, Planning Commission staff. For our first item this evening, item A1, we have HCCPA 24-01, and Ms. Melissa Dickens will be doing that presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Is it working now? Yes, it is. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission staff. This item, HCCPA 2401. This is to address a new statutory requirement for wastewater planning within the Comprehensive Plan. This is a publicly-initiated amendment to the One Water Chapter, again, to meet Chapter 163, 31776(c)(3). This was developed with input and support from Hillsborough County Water Resources, and we have completed the required analysis that the state statute requires. That is included as Attachment B. That analysis is quite thorough and detailed, but it is not proposed to be adopted within the Comprehensive Plan. The proposed change is to add a new policy, One Water Policy 4.2.5, to the One Water Chapter. This policy essentially mimics the state statute in terms of what is required, which is that for any development of more than 50 residential lots with more than one septic system per acre, the county consider the feasibility of providing wastewater services within a 10-year planning horizon. There's also some requirements about capacity and flows and other technical considerations. Planning Commission received comments, supportive comments, from EPC in Hillsborough County, and no comments from Hillsborough County Public Schools, SWF MUD, and the Hillsborough TPO. There are a number of applicable Comprehensive Plan policies, Objective 4.2 and Policies 4.2.1 through 4.2.3 in the One Water Chapter, as well as Objective 5.2 and Policies 5.2.1 through 5.2.8 in the One Water Chapter. And Planning Commission recommends that HCCPA 2401 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Not? Can we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, second, Commissioner Owen. If no comments on CPA 2401, please accord your vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, next item.
The next item we have is item A2, which is HCCPA 23-18, and Ms. Melissa Dickens will also be making that presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission staff. This item is a publicly-initiated text amendment, 2318, to the rural area utility policies within the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. There is a great deal of information and detail in your packets. I will try to get through the information as quickly as possible. I know you have a number of items on the agenda this evening. Some background on this amendment. This is a publicly-initiated amendment. The Planning Commission has worked with both EPC and Hillsborough County to develop this change. This text amendment to the One Water Chapter is primarily to address adverse impacts of septic tanks, also to respond to unique circumstances in the public interest, and then reorganize and restructure the section for clarity. You all are very familiar with the current Comprehensive Plan policy. Within the One Water Chapter are the utilities provisions. Generally, water and wastewater cannot be extended into the rural area, except for certain exceptions. There are connections allowed for single-service connections, and then I'll point out that the section has been updated and amended over time. The amendment is a complete strike through an underline of the Objective 4.3 in the One Water Chapter. It is reorganized under four main policies outlined here on the screen. I do want to note the environmental benefit of the amendment, and also recognize and thank EPC for their support on this amendment. Back in 2020, EPC was instrumental in approaching Planning Commission staff, requesting that this issue be addressed in the Comprehensive Plan. We did work with them to create One Water Policy 5.2.8, and have been working collaboratively with them, as well as Water Resources and Development Services, to develop the One Water Chapter language. Full agency comments are available in your packet, but want to note that EPC's technical experts note that it is indisputable that septic tanks contribute to pollution, particularly in flood-prone areas. They note the proactive criteria. They note previous examples of the need to provide wastewater because of failing septic tanks, and EPC staff is here and will have a couple of remarks following my presentation as well. Now I'll go through the substantive changes of this amendment. The first substantive change is to enable utility extension within the rural area for a documented environmental issue from either septic or private infrastructure. This would require formal documentation. The next substantive change is to enable extension to minimize new concentrations of septic in flood-prone areas. One would be required to meet all of the criteria in this policy in order to utilize this provision. This includes distance from the urban service area, parcel size, flood plain, and flu density. There's also a new provision being added, allowing properties that are adjacent to existing rural area lines to utilize service when subdividing. We have put in some safeguards there as well, to ensure that there is not leapfrog development happening. There is a substantive change that would enable this board to be able to respond to unique circumstances that are overriding public interest. There's criteria for this consideration and exceptions that are added to the Comprehensive Plan. We've also added requirements regarding the sizing of lines and capacity and technical feasibility, updated some policy regarding lot sizes and community plan compatibility, and for all changes, the gross density and intensity remains the same, whether on septic and well or water and wastewater. This amendment has had a significant amount of public engagement and outreach. We have worked through a variety of different means to try to get the word out about this amendment, introducing the amendment last summer, presenting it to the CAC in October of last year. In February of this year, we held two public meetings, one virtual countywide, and then one at the request of the Keystone community in the same week in February as well. I'll also note that we have shared this amendment at the latest AEDC meeting, too. The Hillsborough County CAC did issue a letter of support for this amendment. This is included in your packet, and I believe since the packets were prepared, we also received letters of support from the Hillsborough County Farm Bureau, as well as the Florida Farm Bureau Federation, too. Do want to be transparent that there have been a number of comments that we've received from the community. All of the written comments are included in your packet. We also heard a number of comments that we've tried to summarize here from the public meetings as well. There are a few areas of community support, about desired utility service, protection of lakes, and proactively addressing future environmental concerns. We also heard a number of concerns, primarily from folks, if not entirely, from folks in the Keystone community. They're summarized here on your slide. They concern an existing development, the sizing of lines, and generally concern about the loss of rural lifestyle and future development. Staff has worked to address these concerns from the community. We've ensured that overriding public interest is a defined term, so that that is clear, and there is some clarity there. Staff has created a policy for consistency with density and intensity that is in the livable communities element, to make sure there's no potential conflict with community plans. We've clarified when lines can be run to address environmental issues. And then there are a couple of items that staff was not able to address. The connection policy is handled by state statute. That's something that's outside of the purview of the Comprehensive Plan. And then there were calls to exclude areas of the county, particularly Keystone-Odesa. Staff has modified the language that pertains to development and the land use related to utilities. We believe that this addresses the meat of the concerns, the bulk of the concerns that we've heard, and it is staff's professional opinion that the rural area should be treated consistently in Hillsborough County. Staff received comments from the following agencies: support from EPC, Hillsborough County, Hillsborough County Public Schools; no comment from IFAS Extension, SWF MUD, and the Hillsborough TPO. This amendment, a number of policies are cited for consistency in the One Water Chapter, 5.2 and policies, excuse me, Objective 5.2 and Policies 5.2.1 through 5.2.8. These are all about minimizing the adverse impacts of septic tanks. The Intergovernmental Coordination Section, Objective 1.3, and Policies 1.1.1 through 1.1.3, as well as 1.3.3, which is all about collaborating with subject matter experts, making sure to promote best practices, and ensure that the latest information is utilized. And then within the property rights element, Policy 2.2 and 2.4, this is all about providing the public an opportunity to be heard, encourage information sharing, and participation throughout the process. And your Planning Commission recommended that HCCPA 2318 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Comprehensive Plan. I am available for questions. We also have staff from EPC, as well as Water Resources, who are here virtually. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And Janet Lorton from EPC has a couple of remarks she'd like to make as well. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Got to get this lower. Good evening, Commissioners, and I'll be brief. First, I want to recognize I have Sam Elrobbie with me, our technical expert, the Director of Water from EPC. Should you have any questions? Do want to thank the Planning Commission, Development Services, Public Works, and all the stakeholders who worked on One Water. The EPC is in support of the proposed One Water Amendment for the County Comprehensive Plan under HCCPA 23-18. This is good policy, and the objective of this policy is to limit public potable and wastewater lines in the rural area, except under specified conditions, with the primary intent of addressing negative impacts from septic tanks and the protection of surface and groundwaterers. And all of you know, we have 200 lakes and three major tributaries within this county. The proposed amendment provides clarity, transparency, a well-defined process, and mechanism to address negative impacts from septic tanks or private franchise infrastructure, and adds exception process for the board's consideration in limited cases of overriding public interest. The amendment before you contains provisions to prevent septic tank clustering in areas prone to flooding, and further defines the criteria to qualify under this provision. EPC supports this amendment to further protect public health and the environment. Melissa Dickens already said it, but is indisputable that septic tanks contribute to pollution, especially in high groundwater or flooding conditions. However, 1/3 of Florida's population is served by septic tanks, so it's not feasible to extend service to all rural service areas. What this amendment does not do, it does not change land use, it does not change development density, it does not change development intensity, it does not promote further development, and it does not require connection. There is no language for mandatory connection. An entity wishing to connect must apply to the county and meet all the requirements considered. So therefore, what the amendment does do, it's good for the environment and provides options and flexibility with proactive criteria and a defined mechanism. It defines utility line connection, expansion, but does not open the pathway any further than it already is for connection or expansion. It does not require or compel connections, and it does not prohibit stakeholders from seeking connection under defined circumstances and framework. So in conclusion, EPC is in full support of the proposed amendment. The criteria for both extension and connection remain limited, but better defined, and ensures that any extension or connection does not promote further development. We appreciate your efforts of addressing environmental impacts by specifically including these criteria, proposed utility extensions or connections in the rural service area. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. I believe we've got six individuals that have signed up. The first three speakers, Elizabeth White, followed by Melissa Nordbeck, and then Nancy Pataraki, I think.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth White. I live in Keystone-Odesa. I'd like to address this Comprehensive Plan Amendment 2318. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Higgins, for your email. I'm asking you to please exempt Keystone-Odesa from this amendment. I have both a well and septic at my home, so this policy directly affects me and my family. Per the Keystone-Odesa Comprehensive Plan, new development in the rural area should remain low-density, therefore clustering of septic tanks is not an issue. There are no documented current or past environmental issues with septic tanks in Keystone, nor are there any public health issues with wells. Public interest, like a library or schools, already addressed as an exception in the existing language of the Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. It has been verbally presented, February 15 in Keystone, April 8 at the Plan Hillsborough Meeting, and tonight, that we would not be forced to connect to public utilities if they were extended into the rural service area. The April 25 email from Kevin Moran that I have presented to you says otherwise. I have a two-tank, I'm not going to get into details, two-tank mound septic system. Mound systems are usually found in the rural areas as their idea for areas that have shallow soil or high groundwater. About a year ago, my system, the monitoring station, alerted us there was something amiss with our septic. We ended up having to get the motor replaced in the pump. I think it cost $250, $300. According to this April 25 email, I would not have the option to repair, but rather I would be required to spend upwards of, I don't know, $20,000 to convert my septic to sewer. It says on this, when a homeowner needs a repair or replacement of their system and application is submitted, they check if sewer is available. If it is, they are not granted the permit and required to connect. Now, you can argue that's not what he meant in the email, but because both the proposed amendment and email are ambiguous, it is left up to interpretation. I will note, in regards to they have committed to checking our GIS records to determine if sewer is available, we do have folks in Keystone that do not have Internet access. There is nothing in writing that outlines the procedure for addressing existing public health hazards.
Thank you, Ms. White.
I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Melissa Nordbeck, followed by Nancy Pataraki, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name, and then Regina Hernandez. Good evening.
Good evening. A 200-acre parcel has been cleared for a subdivision in Keystone, located within the rural service area. The developer's own expert has testified if they were only allowed access to well and septic because of the shape of the property, the strict setback requirements from wetlands, and neighboring well and septic, they would be limited to 53 homes. But because this developer is running a water and a wastewater line over one mile into the rural area, they can build 194. That is what this comp plan amendment is about. The county claims it is about negative impacts of septic tanks, with only a few incidents reported in the last 10 years. Yet there have been over 6 million gallons of wastewater released into our waterways from broken pipes, blockages, and failures at pumping stations in the same time period. If you are adjacent to an existing utility line in the rural area, the rule is one resident can hook up. That is the existing language. The new language eliminates that rule and changes the language to may subdivide. It also allows oversizing of utilities if multiple subdivisions connect. The county is out of buildable land in the urban area. The developers want large-scale projects in the rural area, but they need utilities to do it. The county can't afford to do it, so they're going to change the law to give the developers that can afford to add a couple million dollars to their project a welcome mat. Hillsborough County is currently number three in the state for density of homes in the rural area. Defining and controlling the urban service area boundary is critical for conservation. These developers will not be required to do anything about roads or traffic. Overcrowded schools are not their problem either. You are selling out existing residents for a quick financial fix instead of planning for responsible growth. Do not allow this comp plan amendment to proceed.
Thank you. Again, can you say your name for the record?
Melissa Nordbeck.
All right, thank you. Nancy, followed by Regina Hernandez, and then Trish Lawton. Good evening.
Good evening. Just up? Okay. Nancy Pataraki, 18128 Gun Highway, Odessa, Florida. So back in February, the KCA requested that Plan Hillsborough exclude Keystone from this amendment, and the reason is simple. First of all, our existing plan covers health hazards. Second of all, there's no known issues in Keystone. Well, you'll hear from the EPC, or issues in Citrus County, you'll hear about issues in Incorporated Plant City, you'll hear about issues maybe on loots from 2007, but not in Keystone. In fact, we're so far up, we don't even know if we'll be able to pump water up there. There's no engineering feasibility studies, there's no funding or cost analysis, and the maintenance cost has been projected to be extremely expensive. Plus, there's the vague language. What is unique circumstances? What is overriding public interest? That's at least too much for interpretation that can later be challenged. Now, there is on recording from the February meeting, EPC professional stating simply sewer and lines cannot be extended throughout the county. It's not feasible, practical, nor warranted. And let's talk about contamination. There's no records of Keystone having any contamination the last seven years, though there has been from treatment centers. In fact, the one on Van Dyke had a spillage right into the wetlands. And the people who are on public utilities already have great challenges. They have challenges with contamination, with their bills, and the funding, that's about to run out, just being able to get these few low-lying coastal areas onto sewer. And is a scientific method being even applied here in saying that we need to get Keystone on? No, it's not. So I say, what's the plan for Keystone? There is no plan. There's no why, no how, no who, no when. I say no way in Keystone. And let me leave you with this question. If you have no feasible, measurable problem defined, just a general statement about septic tanks, and you have no transparent plan for Keystone, why would you include Keystone in this amendment? Excluded. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Regina Hernandez, followed by Trish Lawton. Good evening.
Good evening. Regina Hernandez, 8703 Lake Com Lane. I'm also speaking on behalf of the Keystone Civic Association, Director of Land Use Committee, Chairperson. Thank you very much. Honorable members of the Hillsborough County Board and County Commissioners, the Keystone Civic Association members voted at our April General Meeting to oppose HCCPA 23-18. We again respectively request the exemption of Keystone from the HCCPA 23-18 county water and county and wastewater policy amendment. According to Melissa Dickens from Plan Hillsborough, during the February 15, 2024, public meeting held at the Keystone Park, there were no past or current negative impacts documented within Keystone. Furthermore, at the April meeting, Plan Hillsborough clarified Keystone could be exempt from this amendment, however, they provided However, they provided no justification reason, however, to no justification reason for not granting an exclusion to Keystone. We understand there may be a need in low-lying coastal areas. However, in Hillsborough County, Keystone sits 12 to 20 meters higher than those low-lying areas and request exclusion. It is our position that the current one-water policy successfully address solutions to the potential negative impacts of septic tanks. This amendment does not directly address a solution nor offers any new safeguards to residents. Additionally, there is no language that protects Keystone residents from mandating hookups because according to the Plan Hillsborough, the county is not authorized to provide that protective language. Per the Keystone Odessa Community Plan, new development in the rural area should remain low-density. Therefore, clustering of septic tanks is not an issue. Furthermore, the current policy already addresses places of public interest. Thus, libraries, schools, and already grant the exemption to the policy and are permitted access to public utilities. I just want to quickly say that Ken Morris did say that if we apply for a permit, we're not going to get that permit. Please exempt Keystone from this Plan Amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you.
Is Trish Lawton here? Good evening.
Good evening. Trish Lawton, 8310 Jana Drive, Odessa. I would like to recognize that we do have a task force of fellow Keystone residents, and I would like to acknowledge their presence, that they're here to seek the exclusion of Keystone from this wastewater amendment. Thank you. I also want to thank Commissioner Hagan. Many of us received response letters acknowledging his support of excluding Keystone from this amendment. We hope that you can agree with him. It is indisputable that Boyle notices when public water becomes contaminated, demonstrates environmental impacts are never 100% preventable. Those of us in Keystone maintain our wells and septic tanks. The health and well-being of our family is a priority, as is the environment. That is what our KOCP seeks to protect. The rural areas of Hillsborough County are diverse. They are not to be consistently applied because the demographics, the topography are different throughout the county. We already have limits in place because the density protects us in Keystone based on our current Keystone Odessa Community Plan. We really hope that you could reconsider excluding Keystone from this amendment. We recognize the need in other parts of the county, and we want to support those parts of the county being addressed appropriately. But personally, we don't have a problem in Keystone. The residents met, not just the members of Keystone Civic Association, but the entire community that exists of people outside of the Keystone Civic Association. And overwhelmingly, we all agreed to seek exclusion from this policy amendment. Please protect Keystone from this amendment because we have our protections in place in our Keystone Odessa Community Plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lawton. Anyone else here that wants to speak? Okay. Good evening.
Thank you, Chairman. Jake Kramer with Sterns Weaver Miller for Windy's Jackson Street, number 2100. I'm here tonight representing Hillsborough County Farm Bureau. We represent about 4,000 families across the county, most of whom live in the rural service area. There's a support letter from us, as well as a support letter from the Farm Bureau Federation, which is the largest statewide agricultural advocacy organization. We appreciate staff working with us. We've actually been engaging with EPC on this particular measure for about four years. So we appreciate them listening. We've had a number of meetings with the Planning Commission. We appreciate them listening. And I would also suggest, it sounds like we've made progress even since the Planning Commission meeting because I haven't heard any really generalized opposition to this like we did at the Planning Commission meeting a month or two ago. So we support this amendment. My only concern is that I think we could possibly use a little bit more clarity on the oversizing and the way that language is written. What I want to make sure is that this board gets to make the decision and that this board has the discretion of when oversizing is appropriate. It's not going to be appropriate all the time, but when you think of the amount of investment that goes into these pipes and the decades that they're supposed to last, I think that there could be occasions when it's appropriate to oversize. And I'm just not sure, reading the language, whether that's exactly what it says. So that's the only improvement I can suggest. But again, I don't want to make the best enemy of the good. So we recommend you all approve this today. And again, thanks staff for working with us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here that wants to speak the item? I know we have someone that had signed up virtually. Reed Fishback, is Mr. Fishback on the line?
Good evening. Reed Fishback, 917 South Parsons Avenue, Brandon. I am in support of CPA 2318, the rural area utilities policy. I live in East Hillsborough County in the rural area, and I work as a land broker in East Hillsborough County primarily for agricultural lands. And overall, the ability to extend water and wastewater is limited within this amendment for environmental purposes. But we give some property owners the option to utilize infrastructure in close proximity to them. It would be nice to have another option in which this extension could be justified. In many cases, there's unused capacity in the areas where these extensions would occur. This is one way that would certainly create more utilization and efficiency of the infrastructure that Hillsborough County has already invested in. The main focus of this amendment is for environmental purposes, and I support and appreciate that this amendment has come forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, that closes the public hearing. Commissioner Kemp's in the queue, and I want to make a couple of comments since all the residents that came down are from my district. I want to, first of all, I want to thank everyone for coming down on Thursday evening to share your concerns. I appreciate your passion and being involved, not only with the KCA, but also with the task force that has studied this issue. I support the amendment. You know, I see the benefits and how it will greatly help the ag community. However, I've heard over the last several weeks from dozens of folks in the Northwest, particularly in Keystone and Odessa, we heard from, again, several of them this evening, and all have made the same request. The Keystone Odessa community represented in a long time. You know, they've been long stewards of their land and rural lifestyle. They are all-in when it comes to their advocacy of the land, the wildlife, and the area's natural resources. And I think, as you heard tonight, they believe that CPA 2318 is unnecessary, overbearing, and threatening to the lifestyle they wholeheartedly embrace and wish to be exempted. This is based on official vote and request by the KCA. Dozens of emails with the same request, with the exception of two that I've seen in the community that did not make this request, but everyone else were all aligned. Years ago, this community formulated their plan that took great energy and forethought. They established a plan that is arguably the most comprehensive of its kind. As you know, Keystone is a compact rural community, and that's why the protections they have enshrined in their growth management plan are sufficient without being unduly burdensome. As you heard this evening, the KCA has hosted public meetings, interfaced with Plan Hillsborough, the EPC, and others. They've also arranged for professionally and academically accredited experts to examine the proposed amendment and how it would specifically impact Keystone Odessa. And what they found was, whether it was due to the topography or an unweaving commitment to control density, this amendment is simply unnecessary. Some of this came up during the speakers this evening, but, you know, my office learned, you know, through conversations with the KCA leadership, that both Plan Hillsborough and the EPC stipulated there are no known septic issues in Keystone. And even after checking with the Florida Department of Health, no data, qualitative or quantitative, was presented establishing a septic system problem in Keystone. And no one disputed this when residents stated the same at the Planning Commission hearing. Additionally, what we've learned, and there was an email to this effect that was shown here, that while it's correct that no one is forced to tie into the available sewer lines now, when service becomes available, permits for repair or installation would likely no longer be issued for septic. And again, that was, an email to that effect was shown. This is effectively a mandate that could have significant financial impacts on residents. I would define it as conversion by attrition. We've got a couple of questions to add them, and then I'm going to wrap it up. Adam, there's already some provisions for high public impact, you know, like schools. So is it correct that in the LDC, current policy already contains a provision allowing schools in the rural service area access to public utilities?
Yes, Commissioner, there is. There is a policy in the Comprehensive Plan that provides that for Hillsborough County Public Schools, School District.
Okay, and am I also correct that in our LDC, it allows for the extension of water and wastewater into wellhead-protected areas, including Tampa Bay Water, wellfield mitigation areas, but it also includes a carve-out for lands within the boundaries of the Keystone Odessa Community Plan?
Yes, that's correct. That's an existing Comprehensive Plan policy that does carve out specifically Keystone Odessa Community Plan. Yes, sir.
Okay. I think you probably see where I'm going. Would exempting Keystone Odessa area from this amendment in any way hinder its implementation throughout the remaining parts of the county?
No, I don't, it will not.
Okay. And the bottom line is, if it's later, if it's determined at some point that the area should be included, this board can always make an amendment and add the community back in. Is that accurate?
Yes, yes, sir, it's accurate.
Okay. So in closing, we've heard the county has approved exemptions previously, so there is precedence, and no legal reason why we can't do this here. It's not exempting, or it's not going to adversely impact any other community. I spoke with representatives from the ag community today and said they had no opposition to Keystone being exempted, and there's no known opposition from any other community. So what I'd like to do is pass the gavel, make a motion to approve CPA 2318 and exclude the area covered by Keystone Odessa Community Plan. Okay.
Thank you. Would it be correct to interpret that the intent of the motion is to exempt Keystone from the substantive changes that are included within this amendment? So if there is a school in Keystone in the future or there is a public health hazard, the existing language that is in place today would still be applicable in Keystone? I just want to make sure we get that clear.
That's my understanding. I'm going to defer to Adam.
Yes, but, yeah, I think the intent is that any of these changes that are being identified here would not apply to the Keystone Odessa Plan. Yes.
Thank you for that clarity.
And then, so that's the motion, but I'll let, I'm open to any type of amendments regarding the oversizing issue that I had not considered earlier. So I don't know if board has any comments on that, but, so.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Hagan, a second by Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Kemp?
That was well outlined, and I was going to, as well, exempt Keystone Odessa from this. And so that was well outlined. I also wanted to clarify, because I felt it was misrepresented, and you addressed that some, Commissioner Hagan, that, you know, we were told, or it was stated that there was no requirement to hook up. But there, I mean, there is de facto a mandate to hook up if the line exists. Someone is living there. They put in a line, and their septic fails, but they'd rather replace their septic. But they're no longer allowed to or repair under certain, I don't know who should answer this, but that is what this will implement, correct?
So... The issue about being able to repair or replace a septic system hinges on whether a gravity line would be considered available. So most of these lines that we see, the lines running through the road are pressurized force mains. And so those are not, those would not be considered available from the Department of Health standpoint. So that would not be a basis to prohibit or to require a connection by denying a septic permit. So if there is a gravity line and this non-pressurized line adjacent to the site, then that would be a different situation. But the line extensions that we're talking about in this amendment would be pressurized lines for the ones that would be within the right-of-way.
I guess it would then, you know, we'd have to understand how, where. We have to understand.
And I'm noticing our mics keep going on and off. I don't know if there's anything that can be done, but mine's going on and off. But continue, Commissioner Kemp.
Yeah, we just have to understand where that is applicable and how widespread that is and who it applies to because that makes it very unclear.
Equal opportunity.
Thank you. Yeah. We do have staff from Water Resources who are here virtually. They may be able to clarify that. Adam is correct. A gravity line is when that would apply, but they might be able to provide some more detail. So I don't know if John or George is able to jump in virtually.
Sure, I'm glad it's just not on my end. I hope everybody can hear me. Maybe I'll pause for a second. Am I heard in the boardroom?
Yes, John.
All right, good evening. I'm John McCary with Water Resources Department Staff. Yes, actually, Adam characterized it very well. I should make sure I point out that Florida statute does have a definition for available. It's very clear. In the case for single-family homes who have septic tanks, the way Adam characterized it, really nails it. There has to be a, not only a gravity line available for them to connect to, but there has to be a lateral up to the property where, so basically, the homeowner could do onsite plumbing and connect to that lateral to the property line. So unless that was the case and there was a gravity system installed throughout a community, the Florida statute definition for available would not apply. So therefore, there would be no issue, I think, from the Health Department permitting, unless, you know, unless there's some other issue that's a different, you know, something that's fundamentally different from an environmental perspective.
Okay. And the other is, because we've had a lot of discussion about the oversized line, and I'm not sure. It sounds like maybe it needs to go back for more consideration by, you know, the parties I've heard tonight. I'm just wondering about possibly putting this through, voting for it, but leaving the oversized for now or bringing it back or something because I don't see, I don't know about clarifying that or the conditions for that tonight.
Certainly. I mean, I can clarify what is in the language. We heard a lot of concerns from the community about oversizing of lines, and so we worked to create a policy that spoke to that, to create a policy that spoke to that, that oversizing is generally not permitted unless it's necessary for operational requirements that are required by the county, or there are multiple developments or areas that meet those exception criteria. Of course, if, you know, there's one parcel, and then the parcel next to it, and they both meet the exception criteria, it would make sense to oversize. So we tried to be really thoughtful in how we crafted that language. It is more general, because it is comprehensive plan policy. There is going to be a corresponding code amendment as well, so that could be an opportunity, but, you know, we did work to be specific about, as specific as possible, within the comprehensive plan.
And what about bringing it to the commission prior to, for prior approval?
We could work on the language and come back, because there is one more hearing for adoption, so we could work on the language between now and then, and coordinate on the code language, and see if that would address the concerns.
So I think that would be very important to review that, so there is a higher comfort level with that, a higher, you know, understanding, clarity about when the commission is engaged, and how it's engaged in those decisions prior to the, when pipes are oversized.
Sure, and I also just want to add one point to that. You know, there was good conversation earlier about making sure that, you know, the commission has the opportunity to weigh in. That is the intent of the exceptions policy. If there is something that is overriding public interest, then there would be the ability for this board to make an exception.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wostol.
Thank you. Commissioner Hagan, it sounded like this was covered, but I want to make sure this wouldn't prohibit anything to do with what we did at Tampa Bay Water recently. You know, Commissioner Cohen, even more than myself, that was very painful, but a huge community need for that large water line, and most of it is in the rural areas. Not to even mention the fact that the entire water plant itself is in the rural area, but the oversized line is largely in the rural area, and I want to make sure that we're not making some arbitrary carve-out to where, you know, since Yemen gives the US a no-fly zone, we have to greatly increase the cost of the mission to fly around their country with a water pipe. So can we clarify that this wouldn't in some way prohibit the overall planning, comprehensive planning of water needs that Tampa Bay Water might need in the future as we go forward?
Yeah, I can confirm that policy, that the policy related to sizing also states that operational, when operational improvements are necessary, that that would be permitted. There's also language that speaks to, there's nothing that would prohibit lines being run in the rural area when they're needed for technical reasons, for technical feasibility. So, that intent, we could certainly add something in. Right now, it says Hillsborough County. We could certainly add something in that relates to Tampa Bay Water, if that would gather more comfort, but that is the intent.
Okay, no, I mean, if it's in there as a protection, as far as everything, look, we've voted no consistently on rezones in this area anyways. Commissioner Hagan and I both, we're very public about our discomfort with the lack of being a community partner of the specific developer that's in question. I mean, it's no secret, and so it's really neither here nor there, as long as we don't break, hinder ourselves strategically with Tampa Bay Water's mission to provide clean drinking water to all the other areas of the county that absolutely must have it, so. I think I'll yield for now, then, yeah.
Commissioner Cohen.
Commissioner Wostol, I think what we could do is ask Tampa Bay Water to weigh in on this between these two meetings, and if there's an issue, at least we would know it. But my guess is there, it will be okay, but we do have that option, I think, so we can do it.
And, sir, I do want to note for the record that we did transmit this to Tampa Bay Water for their comments, so we did do that as part of our standard procedure.
Okay, great. Now, I'll just make a quick comment, I'll support it. But as to the oversizing of pipes, I'd just say, look, no further than South County on the issues we deal with, with water pressure, so I do think that that's a smart idea to plan for it, but I will be supporting the amendment. So we have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, a second by Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Great, thank you.
CPA 2404.
Good evening, Commissioners. Sofia Garantiva here, with Planning Commission staff, here to present on HC CPA 2404, Public Schools Facilities Element Update. Some background on the amendment, this is a publicly initiated amendment. The Public Schools Facilities Element is part of the Governance Chapter of the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. It is considered an optional element, but it is a tool to ensure intergovernmental coordination on school planning. It does not allocate funding or impact school curriculum. The element was last revised in 2016. The update is part of the county's overall Comprehensive Plan update, and includes changes prompted by state legislation revisions. The update also includes changes based on the revised interlocal agreement for schools, school facilities, planning, siting, and concurrency, otherwise known as the ILA. Planning Commission staff work closely with school district staff on developing the proposed language. To review the substantive policy changes, policies regarding intergovernmental coordination and sharing of information are being updated to remove old references to dissolved coordination committees, and include references to the newly formed School Working Group. The policies outlining criteria for siting of school facilities are being updated, including criteria for location of schools within rural area. Policies outlining the concurrency review process and the proportionate share process are being modified to be consistent with state statutes. The Level of Service table, which is located in the Capital Improvement Section, is also being modified to reflect updated school types. Overall streamlining of the language is proposed. The update retained important components of the existing element and the overall structure, but did remove duplicative policies that are otherwise found in other sections of the comprehensive plan, or processes detailed in the interlocal agreement. Also, references to Florida state statutes and the interlocal agreement sections were updated or removed if no longer applicable. For public engagement opportunities, there was a virtual public meeting on March 28th. This was advertised through our newsletter article and on social media. Approximately 35 people registered, and it was also recorded and put on our website. The website also served as a forum for public comment, and provided drafts of the language to the public. Also, we are planning to present the element to the school board as an informational item. Once that is scheduled, that would also be shared. On agency comments, there were no objections from the reviewing agencies. The Planning Commission did receive comments from Hillsborough County and Hillsborough County Public Schools, which were considered and incorporated into the proposed language. The proposed amendment is consistent with the Public Schools Facilities Element generally, but more specifically with objectives 1.1, I mean, 1.5, 2.1, and Policy 3.1.1, as well as Objective 1.8 of the Capital Improvement Section, which relates specifically to school planning, and Policies 1.1.1, Objective 1.4, and Policy 1.4.1 of the Intergovernmental Coordination Section. On April 8th, the Planning Commission found HC CPA 2404 consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I see one individual had signed up, David Coleman, Mr. Coleman here.
He left.
He left, okay. Anyone else want to speak to the item? If not, can we have a motion?
Move approval.
Got a motion approved by Commissioner Owens, and Commissioner Wostol. No comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Commissioner Wostol, do you want to? Okay. Can we have a motion to, on the resolution to transmit 2401, 2318, and 2404?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote on the transmittal.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay. Next item.
Next up, we have Item B1, which is HC CPA 23-17, and Ms. Alexis Myers is presenting on behalf of Ms. Andrea Papendrew. Thank you.
Alexis Myers, Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present HC CPA 23-17, located at Tenota Sassa Road in Campbell, I'm sorry, Campbell Oak Drive. This is a privately initiated small-scale map amendment that is approximately 37.11 acres. The request is to go from agricultural rural 1.5 over, I'm sorry, category, to the residential 1 category. Here's a general location map. The plan amendment is located in the northeastern portion of the county. The site is within the rural area and the Tenota Sassa Community Plan. Here is the aerial of the subject site. The property is outlined in yellow. The site is north of Tenota Sassa Road and west of Campbell Oak Drive. The subject site's existing land use appears to be used for agricultural purposes. To the west and north is single-family residential and vacant land, and then to the south and east is agricultural land. In addition to the south is vacant land and a mobile home park. Further east towards the McIntosh Road intersection are agricultural, public institutional, light commercial, vacant land, and single-family residence land. Okay, here is a photo looking east onto Tenota Sassa Road. Then we have a photo looking west onto Tenota Sassa Road. The subject site is located to the right of this, of this picture. Here we have a picture looking northeast towards Tenota Sassa Road. Then we have a picture looking south from Tenota Sassa Road. And then for the last picture, we have one looking north towards Campbell Oak Drive. The adopted flu, future land use category is, I'm sorry, agricultural rural 1/5, which surrounds the site on all sides. Residential 1 is located further east on the site, and then further northeast is agricultural estate 1/25. The proposal today is to change to the residential 1 future land use category. So moving to the proposed residential 1 would increase density to 37 units. For the proposed, intensity would remain the same at 0.25 floor area ratio. However, it is important to note that rural scare neighborhood commercial, office multipurpose projects are limited to 30,000 square feet. With the existing future land use, it is limited to 40,000 square feet. Residential support uses would be allowed up to 0.25 FAR, also known as floor area ratio. The proposed amendment would remove industrial uses, mining-related activities, and feedlots from the range of allowable uses. Planning Commission staff did not receive any objection, I'm sorry, objections from reviewing agencies. Planning Commission staff found this plan amendment to be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future land use element, specifically the rural area policies under Objective 4, and the community planning policies under Objective 18. Planning Commission recommends that the proposed map amendment HC CPA 23-17 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. That concludes my presentations.
All right, thank you. The applicant here? Good evening.
This is me? Nope, that's not me, sorry. Good evening, Commissioners, Ann Pollock, Fletcher Fisher Pollock Law Firm, representing the applicant, Orange Blossom at Stone Lake. I wondered if I could get an extra minute or two to speak?
I'm sorry, we have to follow our established processes.
Okay, well, I'll work fast. We have unanimous support from the Planning Commission, and that's really because the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, it's compatible with the area, and we've got no objections from other reviewing agencies. We do have support from the surrounding neighbors, including the Stone Lake Ranch HOA, and we have not received any objections. This is consistent with the RES 1 category and the rural area policies. While it can allow 37 units, we're only going to ultimately request the 27 with the concurrent rezoning that you'll see. The area, the intent is to designate areas for rural residential uses, which is what we're doing, and the rural area policies allow for greater density in rural communities. The Tenota Sassa is one of those rural communities. The community plan specifically provides for 1-acre residential lots, which is what we're providing, and Goal 3 requires a balance, a balance of residential, commercial, and other land uses, but specifically including rural residential. And with the property designated RES 1, or similar densities throughout the Tenota Sassa Plan and nearby, this request is compatible and meets the vision of the plan. We are also consistent with neighborhood protection policies. The use is similar and complementary, impacts can be mitigated through the rezoning, and the project reflects the character of the area. So what is the character of the area? I've got some aerials here that shows you generally what we're looking at. Our property is in pink, and the area in blue is a mobile home park with RES 1 designation. The area in orange is the Stone Lake Ranch Homeowners Association, the Stone Lake Ranch subdivision. While it's zoned, it has a designation of AR, it actually, when it was rezoned, it used the flex, and so that brought over density from RES 1 that is pretty comparable to what we're dealing with here today. Along Tenota Sassa Road also is relatively dense development, similar to what we're looking for. Approximately 80% is less than 2 acres, and more than 50% is less than 1 and 1/2. We don't have any objections from any reviewing agencies, and county transportation include, is supportive. The level of service is, for this segment is B, and of course, for, and the standard is C. We will have to bring the road up to standard, or we've requested a design exception, which has been deemed approvable, which we'll talk about in the rezoning, and we will have to make significant improvements to Tenota Sassa, but otherwise, there's adequate capacity. So, in summary, I made it my three minutes, unanimous support from Planning Commission, and from staff, and from the neighbors, so we would respectfully request that you support this.
Good job. I knew you didn't need that extra minute. We've got a lot of people here waiting, so. I don't believe anyone has signed up, but is anyone, this is a public hearing, does anyone want to speak to the CPA? Please come forward, sir.
Commissioner Hagan and Commissioners, I'm Robert Tomzak. I'm president of the Stone Lake Ranch Homeowners Association, and we have worked with the developer of this partial of land over the last year, and we are supporting that development as being consistent with what we have in the neighborhood of our own neighborhood, but along Tenota Sassa Road. We, obviously, we're hoping that more density of residential gives us a better Tenota Sassa Road, and our wives want a Publix. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments coming down this evening.
It's a serious thing.
Okay, we'll hold off on voting on CPA until we have the, until we have the rezoning. This time, I'll ask the clerk to swear in anyone that's going to speak on the rezoning, 23-0774.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Mr. Grady, can you introduce the item?
Good evening, Commissioners. Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services. The rezoning portion of this general item, B2, is rezoning PD 23-0774. The request is to rezone a 37.11-acre parcel that's located on the north side of Tenota Sassa Road, west of McIntosh Road, to rezone it from AR, agricultural rural, which permits a minimum lot size of 5 acres to a PD to provide for a minimum lot size of 1 acre. Based on the surrounding development pattern and the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment 23-17, staff did find this compatible with surrounding development pattern, is recommending approval with conditions. Planning Commission found it consistent, and the hearing officer also recommended approval. Were available for any questions?
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Applicant, come back up.
Good evening, Commission. Ann Pollak, 433 Central Avenue in St. Pete, representing the applicant, Orange Blossom at Stone Lake. Similar to what we discussed for the comprehensive plan, we are now coming in with the rezoning. We are requesting 27 units in, for this development. We will provide access to Tenota Sassa Road on the south and emergency stubout onto the east. We are not requesting any variances. We feel we meet the intent of the RES 1 district, and we also meet the intent of the Tenota Sassa Community Plan. The Planning Commission identified that this project would be consistent with the intent of the rural area policies, and we will be providing private well and septic tanks. The Tenota Sassa Community Plan looks to having a minimum 1-acre residential lots, which we're doing, as well as that balance that we discussed of residential, commercial, and other land uses, including low-density rural residential, which is what we're doing. This is consistent with the neighborhood policies of the comprehensive plan as well, creating like and contemporary uses, and mitigating adverse impacts through the development design. And the Planning Commission agreed that this would be consistent with those policies. Lastly, I just want to, well, I'll speak to the compatibility with the nearby development based on the zonings that have happened in the past and the development along Tenota Sassa. The development to the west, to the north, and to the east is all similar in density and to what we're requesting. The project will meet all local, state, and federal environmental regulations. We're not in an environmentally sensitive area. There are a couple of wetland areas on there, but we've received an exemption from EPC, and of course, we'll move forward in accordance with that. With regard to transportation, we have gotten a design exception deemed approvable, which will require us to widen and repave Tenota Sassa Road from the project entrance all the way to McIntosh, which is a big benefit to the community. And of course, it will be a costly improvement, but we're happy to provide it in order to get the project moving forward. Lastly, we did reach out to the neighbors, and we have spoken with the Stone Lake HOA repeatedly to work to get their support, which we have tonight. So with that, I would be here for any questions, but would respectfully request your support. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any proponent testimony? Anyone in support? Any opponent testimony? Good evening.
Hello, Commissioners. Alexis Myers, Planning Commission staff. The 37.11-acre site is located-
Pardon me?
Sorry. Better now?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yes, the subject property is located in the rural area and within the limits of the Tenota Sassa Community Plan. The subject property has an impending future land use change from agricultural rural to residential 1. The recommendation for this report is contingent upon the approval of the plan amendment HCCPA 23-17. The applicant is requesting a planned development of 27 single-family units with 1-acre lots. The applicant is requesting interim agricultural uses to be allowed on the site per the conditions of approval submitted on March 4, 2024. According to Objective 4 of the future land use element of the comprehensive plan, 20% of the growth in the region will occur in the rural area. Per policy 4.1, densities in the rural areas shall be no higher than 1 dwelling unit per 5 gross acres unless identified on the future land use as a suburban enclave, planned village, or rural community with higher densities. The plan amendment changed to residential 1 would designate the site as a suburban enclave at a 1 dwelling unit per, 1 gross acre density on the future land use map, and would be consistent with the intent of policy 4.2. The applicant will be utilizing private wells and septic tanks, and therefore is consistent with Objective 4.3 and its policies, which limit public portable, I'm sorry, portable water and wastewater lines from being extended into the rural area. Based on the site plan submitted on March 5, 2024, there are 2 wetlands present on the property, 1 at 0.65 acres and 1 at 0.19 acres. The total combined wetland areas are under the 25% threshold outlined in the future land use element, policy 13.3. The EPC Wetlands Division has reviewed the proposed site plan. The EPC has provided comments on January 11, 2024, stating that the site's plans' current configuration, submittal, is not necessary. Planning Commission staff finds that the request is consistent with Objective 13 and its associated policies in the future land use element, and Objective 3.5 and its associated policies, I'm sorry, associated policies in the environmental and sustainability portion. The request is consistent with Objective 16, and is accompanying policies 16.1, 16.2, and 16.3, which seek to protect the existing neighborhoods and development by ensuring compatibility with the surrounding area. The site is also located within the limits of the Tenota Sassa Community Plan. The proposal meets the plan strategy, which requires minimum lot sizes of 1 acre for residential development within the residential 1, agricultural estate, and agricultural rural future land use categories. The interim agricultural use for the site meets the plan's intent to support agricultural uses in the community. The rezoning also meets the intent of Goal 3 by providing a low-density rural residential use and meets the intent of the Tenota Sassa Community Plan. Planning Commission staff finds that the proposed planned development is consistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, subject to the conditions proposed by the Development, I'm sorry, the Development Services Department of Hillsborough County, and the approval of the unincorporated Hillsborough County map amendment HC 23, I'm sorry, HCCPA 23-17. That concludes my testimony.
All right, thank you. Hearing master?
Does any hearing master consider the request to rezone 37.1 acres from agricultural rural to planned development to allow the development of a maximum of 27 single-family dwelling units? No PD variations or waivers are being requested. As the board has heard, the Planning Commission staff is in support and found the rezoning to be consistent with the community plan and the comprehensive plan. Development Services has found the request to be compatible with the surrounding development pattern. The ZHM concluded that approval of the PD zoning with the conditions proposed by the Development Services Department will provide for a compatible land use in the area, which is consistent with the code and with the comprehensive plan. The ZHM therefore recommended approval.
All right, now we'll go to board discussion. Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank the gentleman from Stone Lake for coming out here today. It's actually a serious thing that they do need a Publix or, or Winn-Dixie or whatever, whoever wants to go out there. It's a real issue how far you folks have to drive to a grocery store, but I just want to commend the applicant for working so closely with the, with the neighbors and, and our staff as well. So I know we got to take 2 votes on this, so I'm going to first move for adoption of the amendment.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner, Wellstall and Kemp. Commissioner Kemp, we're good? Okay, we got a motion and a second on the adoption of CPA 23-17. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried 7 to 0.
And I'll move for approval of the rezon.
Motion, Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Kemp. Please accord your vote on the rezoning.
Motion carried 7 to 0.
Okay, next item.
The next item we have on the agenda this evening is item B3, which is HCCPA 23-08. Ms. Gillian Massey will be making that presentation.
I'm Gillian Massey with Planning Commission staff. I'll be presenting on HCCPA 23-08, which is Armond Drive and Soccer Avenue. Can you hear me now? Okay. This is a privately initiated, small-scale map amendment on 2 folios, a total 9.81 acres. The request is to change the site from public/quasi-public and residential 4 to residential This plan amendment was originally part of the April 2023 cycle of plan amendments and was continued to the October cycle. It's located in the western portion of unincorporated county in the urban service area, and it's within the limits of the Town and Country Community Plan. This is an aerial photo of the site, outlined in pink. It's located east of Hanley Road and Armond Drive and on the north side of Soccer Avenue. The site is currently vacant. The westernmost parcel of the 2 is a former landfill site. Surrounding uses include single-family residential on all sides, a public school and park located immediately adjacent to the site. The Veterans Expressway is located to the east of the site. There are some townhome and condo developments located to the west of the site as well. Here's a photo of the corner of Soccer Avenue and Armond Drive. The subject site is located on the right of this photograph. These are some of the residential uses nearby on the west side of Armond Drive. This is the Morgan Woods Elementary School, immediately across the street from Armond and the Soccer Avenue parcels. This is at the southeastern border of the subject site. It's the Schimberg Sports Complex. This is the adopted future land use map for the subject site. Currently, the site is comprised of residential 4 and public/quasi-public. It's surrounded by residential 4 to the north and east, and public/quasi-public and residential 6 to the south and southeast. There is some residential 20 to the west as well. The green line that runs to the north of the site that you see on the map is the coastal high hazard area. However, the site is not located within the boundaries of that area. This is the proposed future land use map for the site. The proposal should change the land use designation to residential 6. The residential 6 designation allows for consideration of residential uses, suburban-scale neighborhood commercial, office uses, multipurpose projects, and mixed-use developments. Non-residential uses shall meet established locational criteria. The slide outlines the potential impacts of changing the site to residential 6. Currently, the land use designations for, what, excuse me, the current land use designations would allow for consideration of up to 4 dwelling units or approximately 106,000 square feet of non-residential development, subject to locational criteria. The proposed amendment would maintain suburban-scale neighborhood intensity at a floor-area ratio of 0.25, but would increase the residential density to potential 58 dwelling units. This application was sent out for agency review, which are, and the comments are all in your packet for your review. Some of the comments that may be worth noting is that community and infrastructure planning objected due to sufficiency comments not being addressed in the revised study. It's our understanding that the traffic study was lacking, and the objective, the objection was based on procedure. In addition, the Environmental Protection Commission notes that any development within the boundaries of the historic solid waste disposal area will require further authorization, and that would be its own separate process prior to development. Planning Commission has reviewed this application for consistency with the comprehensive plan and has found it consistent with several policies in the future land use element. First, Policy 1.4 of the future land use element is related to compatibility in the urban service area and allowing characteristics of different uses to be located near or adjacent to each other in harmony. Objective 16 and associated policies relate to neighborhood development and the protection of existing neighborhoods by using site planning techniques to ensure a gradual transition in intensity between land uses. And the community design component, which is in the future land use element, also talks about compatibility and similar characteristics among development patterns. And based on these considerations, the Planning Commission recommends that the proposed comprehensive plan map amendment HCCPA 23-08 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Applicant here?
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Is that it? No. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, number 451 St. Petersburg. This is HCCPA 24-03, which obviously has a companion rezoning.
No.
No, this is the wrong one.
You're on the wrong one.
No. Yeah, that's it. That's correct. Thank you again, Todd Pressman, again for the record. This is 9.81 acres. The issue tonight is a future land use amendment, which would ultimately allow a single-family home project for 52 single-family homes. All the agencies coming forward with recommendation of support. We are in the Town and Country area. You've seen some of the site that Ms. Massey has presented to you. These are the 2 parcels that are under consideration. Currently, the zoning map, or the future land use map is shown here with R4 and R6 in the immediate area. We started very, very, very large here, with equivalent to 370 units. We have since modified that to 54 units in hearing from residents and citizens of concern. We've also changed entire style. Proposed units went from multifamily to single-family, again, a major change to meet demands and concerns of citizens in the immediate area. So we started with these 3 parcels, and we're just these 2 parcels now. Where removed, 31.33 acres has been removed. This was the prior plan, just to make it where 432 multifamily units, they've all been excised, and the parcels, again, are consideration are these 2, which would be result on this, under the future land use amendment, would be 52 single-family homes, which would be 5.3 units per acre. The subject, per Development Services, subject abuts public lands north and east used for stormwater management, so there's good buffering in that respect. And as Ms. Massey made you aware, we are budding the school and the Schimberg Sports Complex. Planning Commission notes that the density is compatible, includes appropriate setbacks and buffers, density, lot sizes are reflective of the surrounding area, and meets the intent of the Town and Country Community Plan. Development Services makes notes that the site is predominantly zoned RSC 6, and we'd be developed at 5.3 units per acre. This results in a decreased trips of approximately 85 average trips per day per your transportation department, as you note here. And your PC transportation report notes that there's adequate capacity to accommodate the additional generator trips. As Ms. Massey indicated, we're not in the coastal high hazard. The controversy here primarily has been that we are involved with a Berrywood landfill. There are a large number of revised conditions that handcuff this site to removal in this area of the site of the landfill. That is done throughout all the county agencies, which have been worked on over a number of months, and requires the director's sign-off. I'll continue a little bit when we get to the next section. Thank you.
Thank you. You'll also have rebuttal. Okay, we'll go into the public hearing. Each speaker will be given 3 minutes. I'm going to ask you, if you want to speak to this item, to please line up on the side. Before doing that, Adam or Joanna, you want to just speak to the difference between speaking to the comprehensive plan and then the rezoning, so maybe we can avoid some duplication?
Yes, sir. So for the speakers who have come to speak today, just, there will be 2 opportunities to speak. First is on the comprehensive plan amendment, and that will be the general change in the land use category from public, quasi-public, and RES 4 to RES 6. The specifics of the development proposal, the conditions about the landfill, the design of the project, will be the subject of testimony for the rezoning. So the specific project detail testimony should be reserved for the rezoning, and the testimony for the land use will, should be limited to the general land use category as opposed to the general project. And we offer that to help you meter your, your comments, and so you can have appropriate comments for the appropriate applications.
All right. Thank you, Adam. Please come forward, state your name. Each person will be given 3 minutes.
My name is Nancy Hendricks. I've lived at 7536 Armond Circle, which is in the 12 Oak subdivision, for 36 years. I'd like to take a brief moment to ask everyone who is in opposition to this rezoning to stand. Thank you. Thank you. To summarize this proposal to rezone the Berry landfill, the plan is to open toxic waste trenches. Sorry? The plan is to open toxic waste trenches, which are directly adjacent to an elementary school and sports fields in the middle of a subdivision and only partially clean them out. No one knows if this will destabilize them and allow the toxins left behind to leach into the soil and groundwater. The property is on a canal from which the water goes all the way to the Bay and the Tampa Bay estuary, then to build houses on the property, despite the fact that the EPA strongly recommends against building houses on landfills because foundations settle when built on reclaimed and filled land. The subdivision has roads, which are limited to trucks weighing no more than one ton, which which will be insufficient for the reclamation and building work. Oh, and the company that plans to develop this, this land has a history of bankruptcy. What could possibly go wrong? The answer is plenty. My neighbors and I are here to express our fears concerning this plan and our opposition to it. Let's start with the roads. The roads in question were not built nor ever intended to be collector roads and are already in disrepair. Both Berry and Armond are pitted with potholes. When the subdivision was built in the seventies, the developers were thinking in terms of two cars per home. One drive-through 12 Oaks will show you how inaccurate that is today. Additionally, there's a high volume of cut-through traffic from cars trying to avoid the traffic on Waters Avenue. The reclamation and building work will require trucks with a capacity of well over a ton. For example, 40 sheets of drywall weigh a ton. 26,000 pounds is the average weight of a loaded medium commercial truck. If our streets cannot handle the current traffic without becoming a sea of potholes, what will these traffics do to them? The county says they cannot properly repair Berry now, just fix the potholes, which after a summer's rain will be terrible again. If the county requires a bond to repair the road from the developer, that's all fine and good, but what are the 994 households in 12 Oaks who are taxpayers and registered voters supposed to do during the timeframe while the main thoroughfare through the subdivision looks like a minefield? Please disapprove, approve this request. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please state your name.
Julie Hurst, 7520 Clearview Drive. I'm representing also the 12 Oaks Special District, and I have a master's in civil engineering with a concentration in water resources management. As a resident of 12 Oaks for over 30 years, I am strongly against the development of 52 single-family homes within the Westville area of the old Berry Road landfill. Berry landfill is part of the Sweetwater Creek watershed, which you can see here in The Sweetwater Creek watershed is connected to the Tampa Bay via several canals, particularly the existing canal along the north side of the subject property, which leads to the Town and Country Greenway Canal that's also, that's along the south side of Morgan Woods Elementary School and the soccer fields. You can see in the drawing in the yellow and follow the yellow canal all the way down to the waters of the Tampa Bay. Contamination of any of these water bodies would be detrimental to the overall health of Tampa Bay. Groundwater flows across the Berry Road landfill in the southwesterly direction to Canal G, which is the big yellow channel shown right here. Any disturbance of these cells during construction would elevate the possibility of groundwater plume migration of contaminants to the waters of the state and Tampa Bay. Also, please note that the waste cells in the northern, in the northwest corner do extend off the property. That's about 10% of the waste cells that are not on the property. For over 20-plus years, semi-annual groundwater samples have been collected from 10 aquifer monitoring wells, testing for volatile organic compounds and total arsenic. Other compounds such as benzene, acetone, chlorobenzene, and others have been detected over safe limits for the Berry Road landfill. Explosive gases generated due to decomposition continue to pose a threat to any development of the site. Estimates for landfill remediation vary widely, but can approach $1 million per acre. In Florida, 55 closed landfills have been redeveloped, only five for residential purposes. I would like to end with a quote from the report from Mr. Jeffrey Greenwell on water quality. It says redevelopment would potentially have adverse effects to the environment and human health by disturbing waste fill areas, initiating groundwater plume migration outside property boundaries, impacts to nearby local, nearby surface water channels, and development of explosive land gases. The development of this Berry Road landfill would have serious potential environmental concerns. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for comments. Next speaker, please state your name. Thank you.
My name is Bret Hart. I live at 6743 12 Oaks Boulevard. As a Tampa resident for over 25 years, I believe that disturbing the old Berry Road landfill site to build homes will decrease the property value of my home, which I consider an investment, and of the existing homes and tax base in 12 Oaks. When it comes to having, when it comes to having my home and other homes appraised, appraisers have to note any known hazardous conditions near the subject property, which loan underwriters take very seriously. These negative reports are certain to have an impact on all the homeowners in 12 Oaks. Additionally, I want to discuss the misleading traffic study that was submitted with the application for this zoning change. The first thing I want to ask is what happened to critical thinking in the County Development Services Department? County staff somehow concluded that construction of a proposed development of 52 homes will decrease traffic. Looking at their report, staff surmised that if current vacant land were built out to their current allowable density, there would be 61 homes. Staff concluded that traffic would decline, when in fact, it will increase, since the staff's report has proposed area as currently built out, which it is not. So traffic should increase by 690 daily trips, not decrease by 85 trips. Instead of assuming that the traffic is going to move the way it currently does during peak hours, with 62% heading north to Berry Road, which is here, goes up here, 62%, and 38% heading south to Armond, Armond Drive, the traffic engineers reversed it by assuming that 45% will head north and 55% will now head south after the completion of the project, which totally goes against what was said earlier, that everyone will go north, now they're all going to start going south. For some reason, they think that's actually going to happen. Berry Road is the only exit to Hanley Road from the proposed development that has a traffic light. Assuming that most traffic would head towards existing school traffic and not use a traffic light makes no sense. The study made the conclusion that 32 cars would be leaving the proposed development during peak traffic. As a traffic engineer, assuming every home will have one car and many will be carpooling? If anything, if it is anything like 12 Oaks, each home will average two, if not three, vehicles per home. We urge you as a community to reject the proposed development to protect the safety and quality of life for the residents in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please state your name. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ian Renton. I'm a retired mechanical engineer. Thank you. I have lived with my wife at 7504 Amber Court for the past 37 years. The owner of the Berry Road landfill site clearly wants to recoup his foolish landfill property investment, and he has promised the moon over the past months in an effort to do so. The latest promise is to remove the trash buried on the property and refill with non-toxic fill before building. That's all well and good, but won't settling of the newly compacted fill just be an added risk? Furthermore, who is going to monitor that this critical job is done correctly? Let's be clear on landfill experts' advice on the best use for closed landfills. Your own expert, Mr. Jeff Greenwell, Environmental Services Manager, summed it up at a previous meeting on this landfill issue by stating, "Building homes on landfills never has a good outcome." Explosive gas production, leachate, subsidant, subsidence, settling are all risks in repurposing landfills. Experts generally agree that closed landfills are best left as undisturbed as possible, but may be safely used for recreation areas, sports complexes, park spaces, wildlife conservation, and non-residential purposes. A good example of smart landfill repurposing is the recent approval to use the closed toy town landfill across the Bay in Pinellas County as a youth sports complex after environmental remediation. I ran across an interesting study of closed landfills in Florida. It showed that almost half of those have been repurposed as parks, golf courses, and for various sports and recreation purposes. Only four were used for residential buildings, and one of those was the Gunn Highway landfill in Hillsborough County. It developed an explosive methane problem under the buildings. Another was a Lennar Hampshire Homes debacle in Broward County, wherein the ground collapsed and toxic trash rose to the surface between the homes. Please, let's not invite similar trouble. I ask you all to reject this foolish proposal to build on the Berry Road landfill. Let's follow the old adage, "Let sleeping dogs lie." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Please state your name.
You may know me by now. My name is Susan Pritchard. I am the president of the 12 Oaks Civic Association and now the special project manager for our taxing district. I live at 7510 Oak Vista Circle, and I have lived there for almost 30 years. I will have more to say during the zoning portion of the hearing, but right now, I'd like to read a few of the points in the comprehensive plan that this goes against. Environmental Objective 1.18 says to maintain and enhance the abundance and diversity of living marine resources in Tampa Bay. Environmental Objective 1.20 says protect, conserve, enhance, and restore remaining coastal wetlands, living marine resources, and wildlife habitat in the Tampa Bay estuary. Environmental 3.8.4 says prohibit future development and related activities that destroy or endanger fish, wildlife, or game population, or affect their ability to thrive. Policy 13.6 says the county shall protect significant wildlife habitat and shall prevent any further net loss of essential wildlife habitat in Hillsborough County. Objective 14 says new residential development or redevelopment shall provide open space that achieves one or more of the following purposes pursuant to the requirements of the Land Development Code. It protects natural resources, including wetlands, wildlife habitats, aquifer recharge, flood plains, and other resources, and creates open and usable spaces and/or permits the continuation of agriculture activities in areas suited for such uses. Policy 16.8 says the overall density and lot sizes of new residential projects shall reflect the character of the surrounding area, recognizing the choice of lifestyle described in this plan, and where appropriate, shall reflect efforts to encourage gopher tortoise and other significant and essential wildlife habitat protection. I want to reiterate something I sent an email to all of the commissioners. My husband, on the 29th of April, himself saw a gopher tortoise on that land, going into his burrow on that land. There is wildlife habitat there. If we disturb this area, we're going to disturb the Tampa Bay estuary. We need to stop. We need to stop and think about what we're doing to our environment, because extra development, more development, things like this, is only worsening our environmental area. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
Good evening. Ken Williams, 7411 Meadow Drive. Just some observations about this planned project. I know Town and Country like the back of my hand, because I've been driving Town and Country in a big brown truck for over 40 years now. 38 of those years in 12 Oaks. So I've seen the growth of Town and Country area, the people within it, their families that they raised there, where their kids go to school, where they play ball, recreational outlets, and so forth. And I've also seen the ecological impact of when we have systems that break down, spill sewage into our bay, pollute our creeks. Rocky Creek is one of them. Potentially could be a hazard, and we're on the edge of that. But what I'd like to see is, we looked at a plan for apartments, and then Plan B was residential, single-family homes with the 2.3 cars. I've seen the traffic influx. I know where people cut through because of the impact, the morning rush, to get your children, get your family to where they need to be, and then safely at that, and get yourself to your place of employment. I know the traffic that flows east and west on Berry Road, because I live on Berry Road. I know the impact of people that don't respect community quietness. And I'm not saying that if the property was developed and 52 homeowners moved in, that they would disrespect. But what I'd like to see is the developer donate that land so that we can have more recreational outlets for our community, our kids, my grandkids now. I coached high school wrestling. I know what athletes do when they have something to focus on, that kids in communities have something to focus on other than being bored. So let's put that ask out there, that the developer donate that land and not disturb it. Come sit one morning when school is about to start at Morgan Woods. Come through the community when the buses are coming through. The buses aren't the problem, it's the cut-through. Oh, and by the way, when the zoning changes was made a little bit earlier in life, we have dump trucks that run through 12 Oaks. We have traffic calming devices, speed humps. A dump truck doesn't help.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate you.
Ms. Vanessa Bailey, that's virtual. Is Ms. Bailey on the line? All right, applicant, I have a three-minute rebuttal.
Bailey, I live at 6924 Williams
Ms. Bailey?
Can you hear me?
Bailey, you need to speak up, ma'am.
Yes.
You have three minutes.
Uh, yes. My name is, yes, my name is Vanessa Bailey. I live at 6924 Williams Drive in Tampa, 12 Oaks. And speaking regarding the wildlife that is close to 12 Oaks, I specifically purchased my house, my husband and I, 16 years ago, because we are back against a conservatory. That conservatory allows many animals. We've seen hawks, we've seen eagles, we've seen rabbits, we've seen normal things like raccoons and squirrels, but we've also had an armadillo. If you dig in that landfill, which, by the way, was, according to county documents, was operational from 1964 to 1970, it's not even 100 years for whatever was dumped into that landfill to have any time to decompose, and that's just natural compost that wouldn't be decomposing. We also have a situation where no more than an hour away in Parish, Florida, the Rye Ranch development across the street from an existing hawk-broke neighborhood has caused so much dust that they can't see through it on windy days. If, and I hope that it doesn't happen, but if any development does happen over that landfill, then you will pick up dust. And even if it's not thick enough to block And even if it's not thick enough to block view, it will cause sickness in animals, in families, in children, because Morgan Woods Elementary School is right there next to it. But also, less than five miles from that site is the Sweetwater Organic Community Farm, where they are growing organic vegetables and fruit, and there's a farmer's market that happens there seasonally. So I understand that property was purchased, and a developer wants to do something with that and make their money back by putting rental properties or even just homes that can be bought. But unfortunately, the land that you purchased was over a landfill. Trying to build on top of that is going to cause a lot of environmental harm, and not just theoretically. It will actually happen, because this landfill is not very old. Just to name a few things that were in helpful back in the 60s.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Applicant has three-minute rebuttal.
If we go back to PowerPoint, I think it's critically important that you understand that you read some comments from an earlier environmental report from the county. We went back and worked with the county. And in the ZHM report, this is a quote from the ZHM report recommendation, that Environmental Services Division testified they were satisfied that the proposed zoning conditions addressed the landfill waste removal process and the required subsequent gas monitoring. Hearing Master Finch asked Mr. Greenwell, who is in charge of this, specifically as a follow-up, and he indicated, reading from the ZHM report, that he is satisfied that the additional conditions adequately address the groundwater and landfill gas impact presumed for the development. So when you hear comments of these other possible ramifications, that has been changed, and that's incorrect. The environmental divisions and officers of Hillsborough County have conditioned this with three separate conditions that give them entire control and must have the director's sign-off. And when you look at this site that borders the creek, this would be much more dangerous to leave the landfill there for potential leaks and leakage, and there has been some from the landfill in the county reports into the creek or into other environmental areas. We are going to remove that. It's going to be eliminated. It's not going to be there anymore, under the conditions of this request. I'd like to also indicate to you, and reading from some of the long and volume environmental reports, monitoring well BR11 located along the west edge of Arm and Drive, and downgrading of the northwest landfill area continues to exhibit repeated oscillation and lateral downgrade migration of contaminants to the west and southwest are likely attributable to heavy rains. If this is approved and we move forward, those materials will be eliminated, will be removed. So as you hear from residents, and rightly so, concerned about environmental impacts of a landfill, as we have minimized this to approximately 15% of the original proposal, those dangers are going to be eliminated and gone. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll now go to the related rezoning. At this time, ask the clerk to swear in anyone who plans on speaking to the rezoning.
Please stand, raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right, Mr. Grady.
Thank you, commissioners. The next agenda item in this portion is Agenda Item B4, it's Related Zoning Application, PD 23-0472. This is a project that's a 9.81 acre parcel located in the Town and Country area. The request is rezoned to plan development to provide for 52 single-family dwelling units on this parcel that's located, again, on the east side of Arm and Drive. Staff, based on the development plan and surrounding development pattern, is finding this approval with the conditions. Those conditions do include conditions addressing the cleanup of the existing landfill on the property. Based on the conditions, staff is recommending approval. Planning Commission found it consistent, and the hearing officer also recommended approval. We're available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Applicant, come forward.
If we go to the PowerPoint, please. I'm going to skip through for the zoning items. So the zoning tonight is RSC 6 and PD for rezone. And under land use, as you know, we're going to change, again, this project is strictly for 52 single-family homes. Development Services approves, ZHM approves, Planning Commission approves, transportation is no objections. I do want to emphasize again the reductions and changes and modifications that we made with this request in direct response and communication with neighbors from 370 units to 54, from multifamily to single-family, to be as compatible as we could be, and that has brought all the departments in line in that request. This is the largest areas that have been removed. So this is the buffer area and the creek, which I think is a critical component, because it does provide a buffering and screening to the residential. And again, we believe what we want to do in elimination of the concerns of the environmental of the landfill is the absolute best direction, is to remove it. Planning Commission notes density is compatible, reflective of lot sizes meets intend the Town and Country Plan, Development Services, that the area is predominantly zoned RSC 6, separated by public and private right-of-way, as I indicated to you. Transportation, per the transportation report of what could be there, it is a reduction of trips, and this is from your staff report. Again, outside the coastal high hazard. So again, looking at that landfill area, I want to emphasize again the concerns of neighbors we're aware of, and how we've responded to them, and how your staff is responding to them, requiring attainment of director's authorization for construction for development modification. Landfill source materials shall be removed and submit a landfill gas assessment plan to Hillsborough County. There are multiple access ways out from the site in terms of transportation. Arm and Drive.
Folks, keep it down. If you continue, I will have you removed. Keep it down. Continue.
Thank you. In terms of comprehensive plans, one important one is location of elementary school sites approximately two within walking distance to the residential neighborhoods, which is 52 homes would be immediately walkable to the schools, for them to serve and encourage in the use of elementary schools. It provides safe routes to schools, which is part of FDOT and comp plan policies. Integrate active recreational parks, regional park and preserves, trails, other aspects to utilize parks and inspire a sense of place, and integrate and design recreational facilities. Again, the Schimberg Sports Complex and Park Area are immediately adjacent to the site, which is a nice amenity for 52 homes. Support rental housing opportunities. I'm sorry, that's an old slide. And this is a site that is available for the heart system and for pedestrian or for residential transportation access to the countywide system. So in summary, we're below the maximum allowed by the future land use category and the zoning category in terms of number of homes. You have reduced number of trips. We tremendously reduce the project capacity and type of housing by a factor of eight. All planning department agencies support. The conditions of the landfill are in the record that require cleanup and complete cleanup and meets many of the comp plan policies. We understand, and I have great respect for the citizens that are here, but we have honestly and as directly as possible met, addressed, and changed everything that we could to bring this into best conforms that we can. We appreciate your attention. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Any proponent testimony? Anyone here in support? No, you cannot. No, you cannot. Anyone here in support of the application? All right, those in opposition, you have a total of 10 minutes. Please use your time accordingly.
I believe I'm the only one that plans to speak tonight. Again, my name is Susan Pritchard. I've lived at 7510 Oak Vista Circle for nearly 30 years. I am the president of the Twelve Oaks Civic Association, sorry, and the special projects manager for our Twelve Oaks Special District. The land in question is part of the Sweetwater Creek watershed. The canal immediately adjacent to the property leads to the Town and Country Greenway Canal, which in turn leads to Rocky Creek, Old Tampa Bay, and the Tampa Bay estuary, which is Florida's largest open water estuary. Any disturbance of this land, including the removal of waste, could directly lead to the buried toxins being released into these very delicately balanced bodies of water. To our knowledge, no fate or transport modeling studies have been done and should be required before any development is considered. The following quote from a recent groundwater report should have been enough to stop this development in its tracks. Redevelopment would potentially have adverse effects to the environment and human health by disturbing waste-filled areas, initiate groundwater plume migration outside property boundaries, impacts to nearby water surface channels, and development of explosive landfill gases. Regardless of what the county has agreed to now, those statements are still in effect. It has been suggested by officials in the Hillsborough County Solid Waste Department that the only safe way to build on this land would be complete removal of the garbage originally dumped on this site. Garbage trenches on the plot of land in question extend well past the legal boundaries of that land and cross under Soccer Road and into the elementary school and soccer field land. If the plan goes forward and the developer cleans up the land by digging out the garbage, they will stop at the property line. This is not complete removal. The remaining garbage will still be there, and now having been disturbed, will be much more likely to be detrimental to the currently stable property and in turn, the Sweetwater Creek watershed and the Tampa Bay estuary. Further, where would all that toxic garbage then be dumped? We would have trucks of contaminated debris spreading dust and toxic pollutants throughout the traversed areas, mainly Twelve Oaks, for months, possibly years. How can Hillsborough County guarantee the health and safety of the people living near these truck routes? And the extremely heavy trucks would be using roads that are clearly marked, vehicles over one ton, not permitted. Roads that are already in bad shape due to being overused and underbuilt for the heavy traffic they currently absorb. Twelve Oaks residents are very concerned about the dust and debris that will be a constant issue during the supposed cleanup and during construction. There was a recent report about an absolutely devastated neighborhood in Parish, Florida, covered by dust and dirt from nearby construction of a new housing development. The big difference is that the dust and dirt there is not toxic. The dust and dirt that would be contaminating our waterways and covering our homes, our schools, and our sports field would be toxic. Counter reports show that numerous toxic chemicals are in that landfill. Trichloropropene, dicloropropene, acrylonitrile, carbon tetrachloride, isopropylbenzene, chlorobenzene, benzene, acetone, and arsenic have all been detected over safe limits. The proposed construction would spread these toxins over the entire area and cannot be guaranteed to be contained to the proposed site. According to the EPC, there is no actual requirement to dig out the garbage. Basically, if the developer wants to throw enough money at it to do what the EPC does require, they can build right on top of all that toxic garbage. Who will be held responsible if things go south during or after construction? What guarantee do we have that the developer will not go back on their word to clean out the garbage if you approve the zoning changes? The developer has filed for bankruptcy before. If the developer cannot pay the costs involved for cleanup after the fact, which is estimated at up to $1 million per acre, what happens then? If they sell the property with the new zoning in place, would the developer be required to abide by their agreement? We have been told that there are U.S. government grants that the developer could be planning to use for cleanup. Grants such as this ultimately come from the pockets of taxpaying citizens. The Twelve Oaks community as a whole strongly objects to our tax money being used to enrich the pockets of developers. We are also worried about the settling that will undoubtedly occur after these homes are built, whether on top of old garbage or over new filters. Who will be responsible for cracked foundations and sinking homes five or 10 years down the line? I foresee many unhappy homeowners and numerous lawsuits against not only the developer, but also the county if this project is allowed to move forward. Both the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan and the Hillsborough County Municipal Code list numerous items, which have been emailed to each of the county commissioners, that this development plan does not seem to comply with, including numerous areas of environmental conflicts. We have extreme concern for the possible contamination of the Sweetwater Creek watershed, the Tampa Bay estuary, and all routes in between, as well as strong concerns for protective species such as gopher tortoises, which have been seen in the area. To our knowledge, no studies have been done to ascertain the animal population of this land, but these should be required before any approval is granted. On a final note, despite the traffic studies submitted by the developers that somehow included imaginary homes that do not exist, it's hard to fathom how anyone could reasonably conclude that adding 52 homes to a neighborhood with already overstressed roadways could reduce traffic. Our own calculation indicates upwards of 500 more trips per day than are currently happening. Berry Road would end up absorbing the majority of the new traffic, and it was not designed, nor was it constructed as a collector road, although it is already being used for that purpose despite our repeated attempts to get the county to resolve the issue. The result of this overuse is the severe degradation of not only Berry Road, but many of the other side roads within our community that Hillsborough County already struggles to maintain in usable condition. There is currently only a single intersection with a traffic light near the proposed development. That intersection located at Berry and Hanley does not have turn signals and is difficult to traverse even during slow hours because of this. During rush hours, it is severely backed up with vehicles trying to make those turns with people commuting to and from work and the nearby elementary school and sports fields. Adding more traffic to this already congested area would be like trying to put 10 pounds of sugar in a five-pound bag. It simply doesn't work. We have already submitted copies of a petition that to date has almost 700 signatures from residents who strongly object to this development. We expect our elected officials to listen to the people that voted them into their positions on the county commission. I will personally be publishing the names of each and every county commissioner, and whether they voted in the best interest of their constituents, or if they voted in favor of developers that do not care about our community or about our environment. Approving this development would wreak havoc on a beautiful, long-term Tampa neighborhood and the small amount of park-like green area that remains in Town and Country, as well as being extremely detrimental to the environment and human health. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. You have a total of two minutes and four seconds.
James Murphy. I live at 7001 Edenbrook Court. Been to almost every one of these meetings. Do you have a question?
I'm sorry, sir. Can you confirm that you spoke or you participated at the zoning hearing master hearing?
The first one.
Yes, so you did speak?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So a lot of it, especially during the first one, a lot of it, from looking at Mr. Pressman's presentations, we heard a lot lack detail. We haven't heard any detail about who's doing the cleanup or the restoration. There could be a bond presented by the company that is doing the building, should there be any leakage that exposes to the estuaries to any families in Twelve Oaks. And as far as being misleading with the traffic report, that traffic is actually going to go down, it's a lot like my wife telling me how much money she saved me when she went out shopping. It doesn't add up. So I'm just a little tired of these reports are being interpreted a way that nobody looks at it with a common sense approach. If you add homes to that area, you add 2.3 cars, you add the traffic volume. That in itself should just be common sense. I'm a little tired of that. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, the applicant has a five-minute rebuttal.
Again, you were shown a report that was signed by Mr. Greenwell in January. This is the ZHM report in January, where Hearing Master Finch asked Mr. Greenwell as a follow-up. Mr. Greenwell said he was satisfied that the additional conditions adequately address the groundwater and landfill gas impact presumed for development. the groundwater and landfill gas impact presumed for development. Ms. Greenwell replied, he believed the removal of the waste in enclosure under option number three would satisfy the requirements if a subsequent landfill gas evaluation was performed. Hearing Master Finch asked Mr. Greenwell if the landfill encompassed the entire 9.81 acres. He replied that the landfill encompasses a probably 90%. He replied that the area is currently monitored and the concerns are mitigated. He added that he feels that it is appropriate to remove all the waste wasted in any of the areas where residential development is proposed. She continued to ask Mr. Greenwell to confirm that the proposed zoning condition requires removal of all the waste. Mr. Greenwell replied, yes. So again, this was an issue that we are working through with him. So when you hear comments about impact into environmental, impact into the creek, I used to serve on the SWF mud board. If you don't want to have impacts into water bodies, get rid of the problem. Take it out, remove it. I understand that's difficult. I understand that there's great concerns for our environment and for this area, but as all the departments have agreed, we are compatible, we are consistent, and this area will be better for it for the commitments that they're tied into and handcuffed into. Happy to answer questions you might have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Planning Commission?
Gillian Massey with Planning Commission staff. The subject site is in the urban service area and within the limits of the Town and Country Community Plan. It's subject to HCCPA 23-08, which proposes to change the land use designation to residential six. The proposed density in the residential six future land use designation is compatible with the existing character of the development in the area. The area mainly contains single-family residential uses. The proposal is consistent with Policy 1.2, as it meets the minimum density expected for the acreage of the site. The proposed rezoning meets the intent of Objective 16 and associated policies. It includes appropriate setbacks and buffers. In addition, the storm water retention area proposed at the east end of the site serves as a buffer from the surrounding developments to the north. The proposed density and lot sizes are reflective of the surrounding neighborhoods. Two gathering places marked as parks on the site plan are proposed, meeting the intent of Policy 16.5 in the future land use element. The Park A is proposed at the entrance, and Park B is proposed adjacent to the cul-de-sac with pedestrian connection to Soccer Avenue. The proposed rezoning meets the intent of the Town and Country Community Plan. Although the plan discourages cul-de-sacs, the proposed plan development is adjacent to Soccer Avenue, which is a private driveway for the public park and therefore not able to be connected. However, the request includes pedestrian access from the cul-de-sac to Soccer Avenue, which promotes the community plan goal of shared access and connections. Based on some of these considerations, Planning Commission staff finds that the proposed plan development is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, subject to the approval of HCCPA 23-08 by this commission, and also subject to the conditions proposed by the Development Services Department. Thank you.
I thank you. Zoning Hearing Master?
The Zoning Hearing Master considered the request to rezone 9.81 acres from RSC 6 to plan development to develop 52 single-family homes. The parcel is vacant and was formerly the Berry Road landfill, which has been closed for many years. The Zoning Hearing Master stated that the proposed zoning conditions require that the landfill source material waste be removed in its entirety pursuant to all applicable Florida Administrative Code sections cited in the zoning condition. Additionally, the developer is required to submit a landfill gas assessment monitoring plan to Hillsborough County, which will be implemented after the waste has been removed and prior to any residential construction. In response to neighbor concerns, the county's representative during the zoning hearing master hearing from the Environmental Services Division testified that he was satisfied that the proposed zoning conditions address the landfill waste removal process and the required subsequent landfill gas monitoring. It was stated that the zoning conditions satisfy the applicable regulatory requirements for the development of the site. The zoning hearing master found that the proposed density of 5.3 dwelling units per acre is consistent with the surrounding parcels, which are zoned RSC 6, and the development pattern in the area is also compatible and consistent, and less than the maximum density permitted under the requested residential six future land use category. The zoning hearing master concluded that approval of the planned development zoning with the conditions proposed by the Development Services Department that provide for the complete removal of the landfill in accordance with the state, EPC, and County Environmental Services Division regulations will serve to provide a compatible land use in the area and the zoning hearing master recommended approval of the request.
All right, we'll go into the board discussion. Commissioner Cohen, you recognize?
Thank you very much, and let me start out by saying thank you to everyone that wrote in. There were a tremendous amount of emails that came in about this project, and I know that all of us read those before we came in here tonight. I'm going to just quote for a moment from the staff report. "Proposed redevelopment may potentially create additional adverse environmental conditions, including generation of landfill gas and the migration of the existing groundwater plume. The county has monitored the closed Berry Road landfill for the past 25 years under a voluntary closed landfill program. The groundwater plume is presently stable and non-migrating." My understanding is that if this is allowed to go forward, there will be a process put in in order to monitor the groundwater and the landfill gas. And that certainly implies to me that there is something to monitor, which, right now, after 25 years, we have a stable situation. And nothing in monitoring the groundwater and the gas going forward protects us from the fact that it may be destabilized as a result of the project. There was specific attention paid to the issue of removal of the waste from the subject site, but my understanding is that there's waste that spills well beyond the boundaries of the site and that the proposal here is only to remove the waste on the site itself and to leave the rest of it. So, in effect, you're leaving some of the waste there and taking some of it out, which, to me, the net effect is you're just disturbing all of the waste. I saw a sign in the audience that said, "We don't want apologies later." And one of the things I was thinking as I was preparing for this hearing was, you know, what am I going to say to people a year or two down the road if we approve this and then? And look, the developer may make their best efforts to clean this up, and it just doesn't work out that way. What are we supposed to say to you later? We're sorry? We're sorry that we contaminated the water and contaminated the air? You know, I serve on Tampa Bay Water with Commissioner Wustal, and I can tell you that the water north of the Courtney Campbell Causeway is the most polluted in Tampa Bay. And I'll be in Baycrest in a week talking to them about the water quality right behind their homes, which includes all the runoff from all of northwest Hillsborough County. And if by some chance some of this gets into that water, the effects of it could be widespread, and they could literally affect the entire region. And for that reason, I am not going to be supporting this application, and after hearing from the other council members, I will make a motion to deny.
Was that a motion now, or you're holding off?
Make it now.
Second.
A motion for denial by Commissioner Cohen and Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It sounds like it is going to die, which brings a different concern to me. One of the speakers said that there's potentially some type of federal grant program for cleanup that likely exists. And so, since they already own the land, and there's potentially programs out there that would fund the cleanup, do we have full authority to deny someone to clean up this property of their own fruition if they already own it? Are they going to be able to leverage this federal program and do a cleanup even if we say no to the rezone? What are the laws that are around someone's ability to do a landfill cleanup with or without our consent?
Commissioner, I'm not familiar with the grant that was referenced. However, any disturbance of this site would require permitting by EPC and DEP. I don't know the answer to the question of whether they could clean this up on their own and whether that federal grant would be available to them. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. I yield.
Commissioner Kemp?
And I don't know that we have any promise or evidence of any federal grant at any rate in the record.
Nothing of record could say is an available grant.
Right, okay. I just wanted to thank everyone for coming down, and I'm voting to deny this, but you all did a good job representing your community, and thank you.
All right, we have a motion to deny CPA 2308 by Commissioner Cohen and Commissioner Kemp. Please record your vote.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah. The evidence is going to be there.
Motion carried, 7 to 0.
Okay, can we have a motion to deny the rezoning?
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Kemp. Please record your vote on the rezoning.
Motion carried, 6 to 1. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda voted no.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Grady, next item?
Mr. Chair, if I could make a suggestion. We do have for the next two items, B5 and B6, we have about 30 people who are here to attend that, and we've had them downstairs due to the space limitations, and we're bringing them up and bringing them through security, but it may take a little bit of time for them to make their way into the room, and the attendees here to make their way out. I would recommend that...
We jump to B7?
Jump to B7.
Okay, yeah, we'll do that. Folks, if you could please try and keep it down on the way out.
Res zoning and then...
Folks, please try and keep it down on the way out. Thank you. Or we might just reconsider the last vote. Just kidding.
Good evening, Commissioners. Alexis Myers, Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present HCCPA 2403, located at 1347 North Kingsway Road. This is a privately initiated plan amendment that is small in scale and approximately 8.57 acres. The request is to go from residential one to the light industrial future land use category. Here is the general location map. This amendment is within the rural area and within the limits of the Tenota Sasa Community Plan. It is also located north of Interstate 4, also known as I-4, and east of Kingsway Road and Sly Avenue. Here is the aerial of the site. For visual context, the subject properties are outlined in pink, and the blue line indicates the urban service area boundary. There is a vacant single-family home on one of the parcels while the other is vacant. Kingsway Road also goes over Interstate 4 as well. As far as uses in the area, there are single-family uses to the northwest and along the south across Interstate 4. There is also agricultural and vacancies in the area as well. Here is a photo of the site looking east from Kingsway Road. Then we have another picture looking southeast from Kingsway Road. Here is one looking south from Kingsway Road. And then Interstate 4 is right along that as well. Then right here is looking west towards Sly Avenue. And then here is looking north from Kingsway Road. Currently, the future land use designation of the site is residential one. Other future land use designations shown in this map include residential four and agricultural state. The applicant again is requesting to change the future land use category to light industrial. Next are the impacts. As far as the existing conditions, currently under residential one, which allows up to one dwelling unit per gross acre, the site can consider up to eight dwelling units or 110,000 square feet of non-residential uses. Under the proposed future land use category of light industrial, no residential is allowed except limited accessory residential. The site could consider around 280,000 square feet of non-residential uses. The proposed amendment will result in the elimination of residential uses, however, it will increase non-residential uses and introduce industrial use within a predominantly residential and agricultural area. Okay, Planning Commission staff have reviewed the application and has found that the request is inconsistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. The request would allow for development that is incompatible within the rural area. Future land use element policy 4.1 characterizes the rural area as low-density, large-lot residential. The proposed change to light industrial future land use category is not similar to the surrounding area, which is primarily made of residential and agricultural. The proposal also does not meet the intent of the future land use element Objective 16 and its accompanying policies 16.1, 16.2, 16.3, and 16.10, which requires new development, infill, and redevelopment to be compatible with the surrounding area in character, lot size, and density. Additionally, the proposed change would allow for development that is inconsistent with the community development component. Goal 12 of the community design component in the future land use element requires new developments to recognize the existing community and be designated to relate to and be compatible with the predominant, I'm sorry, predominant character of the surrounding area. In this case, the surrounding land use pattern is mostly single-family, and the proposed amendment to light industrial does not align with the character of the surrounding area. I'm sorry, I forgot to also talk about the community plan. The press is also inconsistent with the Tenota Sasa Community Plan. The Tenota Sasa Community Plan strives to empower the residents, property owners, and business owners in setting the direction and providing ongoing management of Tenota Sasa's future growth and development toward a community that adds value and enhances quality of life. The plan also ensures that new development maintains and enhances Tenota Sasa's unique character and sends a place and provides a place of community activities and events. The proposed amendment does not complement the goal and strategies of this plan. Overall, Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan.
All right, thank you. The applicant here?
Thank you. Ms. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, number 451 in St. Petersburg. This is HCCPA 2403. We are located in the Far East County. I'd like to introduce Mr. and Mrs. Drew, their family. This is their family business, this is their small business that they would be operating out of this site. This site is located abutting Interstate 4. There are two parcels, as you can see here, and as the property appraiser has them. The issue is rez one to light industrial with a companion rezoning that we'll talk about in a few minutes. Now, under the zoning, I want to be very clear up front. There's one restriction that this use is only for trench boxes, as you can see in the picture here. So we are restricting it to the one single use, which is storage of these devices, which are put in...
Overall, Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan.
All right, thank you. The applicant here?
Thank you. Ms. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, number 451 in St. Petersburg. This is HCCPA 2403. We are located in the Far East County. I'd like to introduce Mr. and Mrs. Drew, their family. This is their family business, is their small business that they would be operating out of this site. This site is located abutting Interstate four. There are two parcels, as you can see here, and as the property appraiser has them. The issue is rez one to light industrial with a companion rezoning that we'll talk about in a few minutes. Now, under the zoning, I want to be very clear up front. There's one restriction that this use is only for trench boxes, as you can see in the picture here. So we are restricting it to the one single use, which is storage of these devices, which are put in trenches to keep persons working in trenches safe. That is a restriction that the Planning Commission does not recognize nor consider. It's not a complaint. That's just the way they review these things, but you need to be, I want to make sure you're aware of that. So this restriction is not considered by the Planning Commission, which is an absolutely critical condition. A second restriction is that we've added significant buffering and screening on the north and the west. Again, this is a restriction the Planning Commission Board would not recognize or consider. Again, not a complaint, just the way they do their business. And then the third restriction is that that screen and buffering would remain as it is, which is very thick, very dense, and very wide, which is many, 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 many times more than what the county requires for buffering and screening. And you can see some of the forestation here. This is along the roadway. Now, to give you an idea of how the site works, this is a picture of their current site, which is elsewhere. Very simple, very unassuming. It's just used for storage strictly for these units. That happens to be in my vehicle there. You can see it's very unassuming. Now, as well, when they store these things, they're always careful to place wood pieces in between them so they're not making noise when they're picking them and moving them, which is actually pretty infrequent. And this is just the rest of the site. And then to make you a little more familiar with it, along Interstate four, on the Google Maps, I show the site there at the interstate of Kingsway. You have an FDOT weigh station to the east. You have the Suncoast Plastic Fabrication and the David Joseph landfill, which is further to the north as well. And regarding staff analysis, which I think is very important in regard to what you've heard, I'll bring up some of those points and how we differ with them from the Planning Commission zoning staff. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to the item? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is David Drew, 406 Madell Drive. I'm a resident in Hillsborough County for 40-plus years. Both of my parents worked for the county, raised my kids here. Great place. I just wanted to touch base over this family business we have here. Well, one of the things that really stuck out to me with purchasing this piece was it was right on I-4. If you look at it the way the crow flies, it's 1,000 foot to a landfill. If you look the other way, it's 500 foot the way the crow flies to the DOT weigh station. It's not a heavy residential area. There's one neighbor to the north, Ms. Sherry. She's okay with this. The resident to the north of that is a church, and they're okay with this. There's really no issues with this. I would really appreciate it if you all can consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak to the item? If not, we'll go to the related rezoning. This time, anyone that's going to speak, I'd ask you to stand so the clerk can swear you in.
Please raise your hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
All right. Ms. Grady, need to introduce anything?
Yes, Commissioners, the next portion of the agenda item is agenda item B8, is related zoning item RZ 24-0303. It's a request to rezon the 8.57-acre parcel from ASC1 and AR to commercial intensive with restrictions. Again, as noted by the applicant, the restriction would be to limited the site to the open storage of trench boxes. Again, it's located at the corner of Kingsway Road and I-4 in the Tenona Sasa area. Based on the requesting a light industrial plan category based on the surrounding development pattern, staff did not find this compatible with the surrounding area and is not recommending support. Planning Commission found it inconsistent in the hearing. Officer also did not recommend approval of the request. Staff's available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The applicant come forward?
If we go back to PowerPoint, please? Staff's analysis includes a point that surrounding land use pattern is mostly single-family. I just showed you that the site is abutting 24-hour day, seven-day a week, 365 days a year, loud, consistent truck and noise traffic. What, between this and I-275, are the busiest, most dense, loudest roadways in all of Hillsborough County. The property abutting to the north, Mr. Drew has spoken with and I've spoken with. She's not come forward. She has no opposition. We don't have it on the record, but he spoke with her as I did. And the property, next property on north is in support, which I'll show you in a second. But the staff analysis continues that the area is predominantly residential and agricultural area, which is absolutely not the case. It's impossible to characterize it that way unless you're looking much further to the north, as I showed you on this mapping. Planning Commission staff notes the area is predominantly made of residential agricultural uses. At this particular area, this particular vicinity, that is not the case. It's tremendously impacted by I-4. 154,000 vehicles per day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Planning Commission notes the surrounding development pattern is mostly comprised of large rural residential loss. In this particular vicinity and this particular use, that doesn't apply well. We don't agree with that. And this is the site. The forested area on the other side of the interstate is the site, which again is directly abutting on I-4. The staff analysis, when you look at the staff analysis, Planning Commission report, they barely even mention Interstate four. They mention all these other elements, but they make no analysis of Interstate four and that impact. This is the whole staff analysis. There's nothing in there that indicates their consideration of I-4. Objective 12.1 is that sites should be designed to relate to and be compatible with the predominant character of the surrounding area. In this case, we believe we are. This is a use that's quiet, extremely low trips, almost no trips, no infrastructure, no odors. It's a great site of this particular area. The intent of objective 10.6 and the 16s are to be compatible with the surrounding area, which we believe we are because the property owner next door and the interstate are our two property owners next door. Policy 16.1 calls for required buffering areas and screening devices between unlike land uses. We've done that. We've tripled the buffering and many times increased the screening by keeping the natural screen in there. 16.2, same thing. Buffering, screening techniques, and control of specific land uses. We've done all three of those. All three of those. We controlled the land use, the buffering, and the screening to meet that gradual transition of intensity. Policy 16.3, creation of complementary uses and mitigation of adverse impacts, which we've done. And Development Services does get it. They quote, "Given the adjacent zoning development pattern, staff finds the site characteristics, required buffering, screening, and setbacks, and the use restrictions do provide appropriate mitigation for potential impacts of the proposed rezoning." Now, interestingly enough, a few years ago, I was in for a complent amendment directly across the street, 2117. That was for residential. That was turned down. So we have to ask ourselves, we don't want residential on the interstate. We believe this is a good site on the interstate. We believe this is a site that works really, really well. Mr. Davis uses just two vehicles, a Ford 150 and another simple truck for these type of things. I've indicated our second restriction is the buffering outside of the driveway area. Transportation, we note it's very similar to a single-family home. And as I've indicated to you, the temple is the next property showing no opposition. Again, we've had no one show up who was a abutting neighbors. We had one gentleman at the last hearing who had some other concerns, which were outside of the zoning proposed use. So I do have two very short video clips. If we could play those, please, and that'll be a complete, Mr. Chairman. So the site is the forested area right across the street. I wanted to bring home the impact and the noise of the site. If we could play the second clip, please. So the site now is immediately to our left. So you can see why we disagree with the staff's characterization of the site and why the site would work so well. We're happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any proponent testimony? Any opponent testimony? Planning Commission?
Alexis Myers, Planning Commission staff. The 8.7-acre property is in the rural area, within the limits of the Tenona Sasa Community Plan. The property is pending a future land use change to light industrial per HCCPA 2403. The rezoning recommendation is based upon the approval of the future land use change. The applicant requested a rezoning from agricultural, single-family, conventional, and agricultural rule to commercial intensive restricted to only allow for the open storage of trench boxes. Future land use element policy 4.1 characterizes the rural area as low-density, large lot residential. The subject site is within the rural area, and the proposed change from residential one to light industrial is not similar in character to the surrounding area. Objective nine of the future land use element, also known as the flu, states that all existing and future land use development regulations shall be made consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. Policies 9.1 and 9.2 allow for approving zoning that is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and developments that meet the regulations established by Hillsborough County. The proposed amendment would not be consistent with objective nine and policies 9.1 and 9.2, as the area is predominantly made of residential and agricultural uses. The proposal does not meet the intent of future land use element, objective 16, and its accompanying policies 16.1, 16.2, 16.3, and 16.10, that require new development, infill, and redevelopment to be compatible with the surrounding area in character, lot size, and density. Goal 12 and objective 12.1 of the community design component in the flu requires new development to recognize the existing community and be designed to relate to and be compatible with the predominant area, I'm sorry, character of the surrounding area. In this case, which is made of the large lot, residential lots, the proposed rezoning does not align with this character of the surrounding area and presents significant compatibility concerns, given the rural residential nature of the area. The site also does not meet the goals and its accompanying strategies of the Tenona Sasa Community Plan. The sense of community goal ensures that new development maintain and enhance Tenona Sasa's unique character and sense of place and provides a place for community activities and events. The community plan envisions low-density residential agricultural uses and uses that protect the area's rural character. The rezoning to allow for the commercial intensive restricted use does not complement the goals and strategies in this plan. The request to go from ASC1 and AR to CIR, also known as commercial intensive restricted, is a standard district. Therefore, a site plan was not attached. It would be difficult to evaluate the impacts of the surrounding development without specifying the height, mass, and scale of development on-site. Therefore, we find that the request is inconsistent with the surrounding development pattern, surrounding uses, and is inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan. Overall, the proposed change would allow for development that is inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan.
Hearing master?
The zoning hearing master considered the applicant's request for a rezoning of the subject property, which is approximately 8.57 acres in size and is currently zoned AR and ASC1. The proposed rezoning would rezon the property to the CIR, Commercial Intensive Restricted zoning district. The applicant has applied for a concurrent comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use category from residential one to light industrial. The proposed use is the open storage of trench boxes, metal structures that are inserted into a trench to secure the individuals inside from collapse. This is considered to be an industrial land use, as evidenced in the applicant's request for this comprehensive plan amendment. The applicant has proposed restrictions to the commercial intensive zoning district that would allow the single use of the open storage of trench boxes only, and also provide for extensive buffering and screening, as well as preservation of natural forestation on-site. The zoning hearing master, following the hearing, concluded that the proposed rezoning to the commercial intensive restricted zoning district is not appropriate, given the access and life safety issues that have been identified by the county's transportation review section. The ZHM found that the request is therefore inconsistent with the code and with the comprehensive plan and recommended denial.
All right. Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to thank staff for working with me on this one. I've taken a deep dive into it. Mr. Chairman, I know we split Tenona Sasa, and this is kind of on my side, but it's still, you know, we obviously look at the I-4 corridor and we look at the industrial, and we see that in the Plant City area, of course, more so in the Plant City. Tenona Sasa, you know, I really struggled with this one. And one of the biggest reasons I struggled with it is more so, I think, on the Development Services side. I think there was a map that was a little bit, I'm glad you guys clarified that today, a little misleading. There's a weigh station there next door, and the gray on there does not mean that that, if you could allude to that real quick, too. That does not mean there was any, there's any industrial...
Correct. That gray on the future land use map was indicating basically part of the right-of-way for I-4, and there's a weigh station there that confirms that is not an industrial use. That is basically part of I-4. It's only accessed from I-4 and back to, for the purpose of weighing trucks, not an industrial use.
Not industrial use, yeah. And thank you for that clarification. Really, the transportation and access is the beef that I have with this particular one. Not to mention, I do think we are talking about more agriculture and nature and keeping in mind and aligned with the community plan. But the transportation and access, and Joanna, you alluded to it being dangerous, and I think what you're stating is that the line of sight there, can you clarify that? Because that looks like an issue.
Yes, that was summarized in the zoning hearing master's recommendation of denial, noting that the transportation review section found that there were significant site visibility issues at that access point.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm struggling with this one. I know we're kind of a tough board here today, but I am struggling with this one. I'll sit back and listen to some other commissioner comments, but the more I look at it and the more I look at the access, really, and the transportation issues and then compatibility, it's hard for me to get there on this one.
Commissioner Cameron Spata?
Yes. You know, with the being, the location it is, I-4, 275, all the noise, you know, for me, I mean, I would say I will support it. My only concern, just as, you know, you mentioned that about the access, could you talk a little bit about that?
That's an important consideration. I really would like to respond to it. Thank you. This is a non-site plan application. All of those transportation issues must be addressed and reviewed during site planning and plating. We don't even submit a transportation report for Euclidian or non-site plan application. And your staff report tells you, the staff report, and I can pull it up for you, tells you specifically that those issues are addressed and resolved at site planning and plating. We have had a transportation consultant look at it. She's given it her blessing. But again, your staff report also tells you that during these non-site plan reviews, they don't look at or really review transportation, but transportation has been doing not negative, I don't mean this to be negative, but they've been doing a creep, a bureaucratic creep, and they're starting to get into these non-site plan issues. So those issues of concern will be addressed. They have to be addressed. They're required to be addressed if you allow this to move forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, if, I don't agree that this would be residential. It just doesn't seem like anything that I would ever even consider for myself. I-4 is just establishing a pattern. It's just, it's what the facts are, even if the map hasn't caught up to that. But I guess if we're saying that the issue is access, are we saying that this can never be anything? Because wouldn't we also say then that access would be too dangerous for residential in the same regard? Is the suggestion that there's no way to ever cure a... a safe access point for these locations? Yes.
The concern with the access is, and it's a good point, you know, there needs to be access to the site, and we can't deny access. The concern with the access is the nature of the use that's proposed and the uses that could be considered in the light industrial plan category, the higher truck type traffic. Those were the items that were of particular concern for this request.
So then, if we approve the rezon, but then no site plan that is feasible comes forward, then we can just continue to say no to the site plan since there wasn't?
If the zoning is approved, then they would come into site, come to site plan, they would need to design the site to the best that they could, provide the adequate depth on-site. There is a buffer that would keep that 60 feet from the northern boundary. But, you know, to answer your question, if the zoning is approved, then there will be objective permitting criteria that would be reviewed at the site plan stage, and if they meet the code criteria, then it would be approved. It's not a, it would not be a subjective review of whether we think it's a good idea or not if the zoning is approved.
Okay, so then if they can't meet those requirements, that's on them?
Yes, sir.
All right, then I'm fine with supporting it.
All right, Commissioner Kemp?
Based on that, and, you know, it doesn't look like this can be used for much else from, you know, where I see it's positioned. I'd move approval because I, it sounds as, move approval with that condition in terms of access.
Okay, we got a motion to approve the CPA by Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Cameron Sepeda. Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah, I just want to say I agree with all of you. I think that this, you know, it's sitting right on I-4. I don't know what we expect people to do with this land with the kind of noise that was demonstrated, so I agree with that.
Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, so we could put turn lanes in and off this because that was really a big issue there. So I was like, okay, well, how in the world could we ever have a turn lane?
If they meet the thresholds for turn lanes, they'll be required to put in a turn lane. We believe that there will be some challenges with the grade of the road and the guardrail from installing that, but it's a matter of if the code requires it, then they'll have to be able to provide it to be approved, and if they are not, then they won't be able to be approved as not meeting the.
Mr. Pressman, do you want to address that?
Quickly.
Quick with you.
The owners have had some discussion with the property owner immediately to the north, so that could be a way to go in terms of purchasing the property. The transportation consultants are very good, and they work out a lot of situations, but we are accepting that situation and accepting that condition. We believe that we can make it work.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cameron Sepeda? Are you good? Okay, we got a motion on CPA. Please record your vote.
Motion, Karen, 7 to 0.
All right, can we have a motion on the rezoning? Motion, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Myers, please record your vote.
Motion, Karen, 7 to 0.
All right, thank you. Next item.
Thank you. The next item we have on the agenda is item B5, which is HCPA 2316. Ms. Jillian Massey will be presenting the item.
Planning Commission Staff, this is Jillian Massey. I'll be presenting on HCPA 23-16, 13320 Kane Road. This is a privately initiated small-scale map amendment on two folios that total approximately 3.87 acres. The request before you is to change the land use from residential 4 to light industrial planned. This was originally part of the July 2023 plan amendment cycle. It's located in the northwest portion of the unincorporated county in the urban service area. It's within the limits of the Greater Carrollwood-Northdale Community Plan. This is an aerial of the site outlined in pink. It's located on the west side of Kane Road and north of Gunn Highway. The site is located to the east of the Veterans Expressway. According to the Hillsborough County Property Appraiser, the site is currently vacant and owned by the religious establishment located immediately to the south. The site is currently entitled for a Type C community residential home. Other surrounding uses mainly include single-family detached residential to the north, east, and west. Further south of the church, there are light commercial uses, including an office park at the corner of Kane Road and Gunn Highway. This photo is facing west on Kane Road towards the subject site. As you can see, it's vacant and wooded. This is an example of some of the single-family residential uses that are adjacent to the subject site. This is immediately next door. Here is another home located across the street. This is, you can't see from this photo, but behind these trees are the church which owns the property that we're talking about this evening, and it's located immediately south of the site. This is the office park front of Gunn Highway at the corner of Kane Road. This is located approximately 800 feet south of the subject site. This is the adopted future land use map for the site. Currently, it's designated as residential 4, which allows consideration of residential uses at up to four dwelling units per gross acre in a suburban-scale neighborhood, commercial, office, multipurpose, or mixed-use projects that are limited to 0.25 floor area ratio and subject to locational criteria. The site is completely surrounded by the residential 4 designation. Further south across Gunn Highway is designated as residential 6 and residential 9. This is the proposed future land use map for the subject site. The proposal is to change the designation to light industrial planned. The light industrial plan designation allows for consideration of light industrial uses such as processing, manufacturing, recycling, and storage of materials as the predominant uses, including support offices, warehousing, and rural-scale retail uses pursuant to locational criteria, and residential uses are not permitted. This slide outlines the potential impacts from changing the site from residential 4 to light industrial planned. Currently, up to 15 dwelling units can be considered on the site, and a change to the light industrial planned would not allow for consideration of residential uses at all. Under the residential 4 designation, up to approximately 42,000 square feet of non-residential development at a floor area ratio of 0.25 can be considered subject to locational criteria. The change to light industrial planned would allow for approximately 126,000 square feet of non-residential development at a floor area ratio of 0.75. The proposed amendment would eliminate the possibility of residential uses and introduce light industrial uses. Planning Commission has reviewed this application for consistency with the comprehensive plan and has found it to be inconsistent with several policies. First, Policy 1.4 of the future land use element, which relates to compatibility in the urban service area and allowing the characteristics of different uses to be located near or adjacent to each other in harmony. Objective 16 and associated policies relate to neighborhood development and the protection of existing neighborhoods by using site planning techniques to ensure a gradual transition and intensity between land uses. The community design component discusses compatibility and similar characteristics among development patterns. The proposal has found to be also inconsistent with Goals 2 and 5 of the Greater Carrollwood-Northdale Community Plan, which relates to community identity and walkable environments that are safe and convenient. This application was also sent out for agency review, in which you can find the comments in your packet, and there were no formal objections. And with that, Planning Commission recommends that the proposed comprehensive plan map amendment, HCPA 23-16, be found inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The applicant, come forward. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Father Robert Douglas, and my address is 19431 Everton Place, Land O' Lakes. I bring greetings from our community of faith. Many are here this evening. You will notice our congregation by their red shirts. I would ask St. Mark's folks to stand now. You can be seated. As the spiritual leader of St. Mark's Episcopal Church of Tampa, and Christopher Bryant here at my side as the project manager of the church, we are here tonight to ask for your help. We are seeking to use a very small portion of our property to create a revenue stream, to save and maintain the beauty of our property as compared to what is approved and allowed currently. Our plan development provides a needed service to the community. We'll be extremely quiet, reducing traffic, and protecting the natural beauty of the land, including saving all of the grand oak trees. This is a solution our neighbors can be happy with. Our proposal meets all of these goals, and we are proud, after a significant prayer, multiple congregational meetings, two neighborhood meetings, many discussions, and going door to door, not a single adjacent owner or nearby neighbor opposes this plan. The entirety of our congregation is on board with this plan as well. The plan we propose is in line with our mission, continuing to be a good neighbor in the midst of our community. We gather here this evening to ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Father.
Good evening. Christopher Bryant, 1257 Brucey Place. Father Bob described me as project manager, which is a nice way of saying I'm volunteering my time to help the church out. So, over the past six months, I've had the opportunity to meet with about 150 folks in our community at town hall-style meetings and additionally going door-to-door. I also provided this to zoning hearing master Finch, but I brought you all copies this evening of over 60 community stakeholders in support, including neighbors who are directly adjacent. Their written support is here this evening, and I'll leave that here. Light bedtime reading. So tonight's application is much more modest than the previously mentioned 77-bed assisted living facility, requiring a lot of EMS traffic, generator testing, all of that that involves with that. And, you know, this proposal tonight is much more modest, in line with our congregation's needs, and providing a modest means of upkeep while keeping with our charitable mission. We have five nonprofits meeting at our church weekly, calling St. Mark's their kind of meeting space and home, and a number of those are scout troops. This large vehicle storage would allow a number of scout troops to store their kayaks and camping gear for free in a safe place, a place that they don't have right now. In all of my conversations with neighbors and our community stakeholders, I've stated we want to use this plan to preserve as much of the land as possible and to do so in a way that allows St. Mark's to continue to exist. Commissioners, please, support the application in front of you this evening so St. Mark's can continue to be here, continue to be a good neighbor, and continue to be a welcoming place for all those who call Citrus Park home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Chairman, Commissioner Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, St. Petersburg, Florida, number 451. I do a lot of speaking in public, but I have to say, following the Reverend, I don't know if I could reach his level of presentation, but I'll do my best. I am very proud to be representing St. Mark's Episcopal Church of Tampa for this land use amendment. We are located in the Citrus Park area, as you can see here by the mapping, in between Veterans Expressway and Gunn Highway. Now, this is the property appraiser as it has the actual zoning site, which is vacant. Abutting to the south is the existing church building and property, and again, abutting to the north is the rezoning site. So this is the site that is under your consideration on Kane Road this evening. St. Mark's has had a presence in the county for quite a long time. They have 350 members. Many of them are here this evening. We appreciate you all being here. Thank you. We filed two formal neighborhood meetings, and as indicated, the Reverend and Christopher also went door-to-door. And I want you to have one critical point, is that we have not had a single nearby or abutting property owner that has objected to this request. So in this media vicinity, we've had no opposition whatsoever. Now, the site is heavily treed. It's vacant, and what the church has done is present this use in the area where it will save trees. In fact, only a few trees would have, trees will come down. Now, as they both mentioned, what's important for you as well to know is that it is approved currently for a 77-bed ALF. That was approved in 2017. They decided not to move forward with that. We're seeking to erase that tonight and allow the use that we're proposing under this major modification, which is exterior open storage of RVs, campers, travel trailers, motorhomes, water, light boats, jet skis, and automobiles. Not permitted are any kind of semi-trucks, storage containers, shipping containers, construction material, construction vehicles stored on property, no maintenance or the ability to live or maintain a residence in any of the vehicles. Now, again, this restriction is not considered or accepted or reviewed by a planning commission. Again, not a complaint. Just want to make sure that you're aware of that. So this is the property, and the area of vehicle storage as proposed is shown here. It's roughly about 20% of the property. That's it. The rest of the property will be left with all those trees and vacant area that you've seen. There's actually two different plans both filed, and this will allow for approximately 44 parking spaces. Now, the next restriction, I'll continue as we move forward to the zoning. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to it? I would certainly encourage you to have a spokesperson or spokesperson's if possible. This is to the CPA. The rezoning will be next. Does anyone want to speak to the CPA comprehensive plan amendment? Excellent. We'll hold off on voting until the companion rezoning. This time, if anyone's going to speak during the rezoning, if you'll stand and raise your right hand, the clerk will swear you in.
Do you swear firm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? You may be seated.
Ms. Grady?
Commissioners, the rezoning portion of this, item B6, is a major modification, 23-0951. It's a major modification to the 3.847 acre parcel, which is located on the west side in the Greater Carrollwood-Northdale area, north of Gunn Highway, east of the Veterans Expressway. It's located on the west side of Kane Road, north of Gunn Highway. The request is, again, to rezon this major modification, this 3.87 acre parcel, to modify it from the current allowance for a community residential home to allow for open storage as indicated in the applicant's request. As part of this, we're asking for a light industrial plan category, future land use change based on surrounding development pattern. The staff was not supportive of the request to modify the use from the current allowances to this commercial use for the open storage, and therefore, not recommending approval of it. Planning Commission found it inconsistent, and the hearing officer also recommended not support. Available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Applicant?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Could we go back to PowerPoint, please? Thank you. So second restriction is that we're providing a 90-foot buffer on the north. That means 90 feet is guaranteed, let alone the rest of the vacant, the rest of the property under the PD remains vacant, and a guaranteed 50-foot buffer in the rear, and a 6-foot solid fence around the whole property. The other thing to recognize on the scope and scale of this is that the site is located approximately 300 feet from Kane Road, and when you go back and look at the tree survey, you'll see that the trees are significant throughout the entire site. This is the plan put on an aerial. You can see the small nature of the vehicle storage area, and these are just two of the folks abutting who. And these are just two of the folks abutting who are indicating support for the plan. So, this would be the north buffer that would remain the same. You can see it's many, many times more higher, dense, thicker than what the county requires on the north. This would be the west. This will remain, and on the west, this will remain as well. So, again, those restrictions are not elements that the planning commission would recognize, let alone the use that's proposed. So, this is really a decision basis with great liberty of the old versus the new. Out with the old, in with the new, improved. So, with the old ALF plan of 77 beds, with this plan, you have much greater setbacks. You can see the setbacks in the ALF are very small. Tremendous tree save. The ALF will decimate the trees on the site. Buffers are many times increased. Screening are many times increased. Vehicle trips are tremendously reduced. Noise and activity are far reduced. There's virtually no structure compared to a 77-bed ALF. Height and mass many times reduced, and virtually no infrastructure. Your staff report tells you that compared to the ALF, this is a reduction of 139 trips per day. Under the ITE, it does not include data for open storage facilities because they are so low. Now, we have to talk about one particular issue here. The site, as I've shown you, is located to the south. To the north is the Woodmont subdivision. The Woodmont subdivision, at closest, as the crow flies, is 842 feet. At the furthest is 2,880 feet, furthest home. Now, we found a flyer that was circulated among neighbors, which states that there may be adult entertainment under the zoning, and adult entertainment and porn-type uses. This is a flyer that we received that was circulated, as we understand, was circulated through the Woodmont subdivision. Second problem is that the ZHA made a disastrous error, because, as she's indicated in her report, that the opposition was primarily residents of the adjacent Woodmont subdivision, which is not correct. As I've shown you, it's from 800 to 2,800 feet away. So, that ZHA report was terribly colored and misunderstood because of that circumstance. I'm going to repeat, we have not had a single abutting or nearby vicinity owner that has come out in opposition. The reality is that we have tremendous support from neighbors throughout the area, and particularly in the median vicinity. So, looking at some of the com-plan policies, which we followed, and the church did very well with, that redevelopment should be integrated with mitigation of adverse impacts, which clearly we've done, transportation and pedestrian connections, use of professional site planning, buffering, screening techniques, and control of specific land uses. Clearly, we've done all those three. Policy 6211, again, limiting commercial development to a neighborhood scale, which we believe we've done, and requiring buffer areas and screening areas between unlike land uses, which clearly we've done, many times exceeding what the code would require. Compatibility is in regard to height, scale, mass, bulk of structures, vehicular traffic, circulation, certainly on all those elements compared to the ALF, clearly, clearly, we are many times less impacting. And looking at the Greater Carrollwood, Northdale Community Plan strives for compatibility, using those techniques, again, style, mass, scale of development, integrated, which of course, we've done, and prioritize pedestrian circulation. Light industrial uses tend to be more vehicular-focused. In this case, we're reducing those substantially. And as your staff notes, it's a reduction of transportation of 139 trips. So, again, between approved and proposed, we are more positive on every count. So, I believe the church has, on their planning, has done very well, and they've mitigated. They've been a good steward of all their lands. Mitigation is exceptional, reduce trip rate, is appropriate per plan policies, meets many of the policies and objectives better than what's currently entitled, and we thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any proponent testimony? Any? Okay. Come forward. We have a total of 10 minutes.
Good evening. My name is Ed Spinks. I'm at 2801 West Bush Boulevard in Tampa, Florida. I'm a member of St. Mark's Church, and I'm fortunate to be currently serving on the vestry. I've been involved in this issue, not since day one, but pretty early on, when I learned about that it's currently set up for a two-story assisted living facility, and we came up with a plan to make a RV or large vehicle storage. I feel, and I think most of us feel, that this is a very sensible plan, very reasonable use. It protects the trees, it protects the church, it protects the land. It's a benefit for everyone involved. Now, I'm also a parent of a 12-year-old boy and an eight-year-old girl. The important thing to know about St. Mark's is something that was mentioned earlier. We got things that go on there other than Sunday. We got two Boy Scout troops that I know of that meet during the week. We got robotics club that meets during the week, and we have other events that have young children there at the church on a regular basis, including mine. So, having a high volume of traffic would certainly not be good for these children, and it'd be much better off for them to have the ability to play in these historic trees, these large oak trees that are very beautiful. I know you only got a chance to see it when it was up on the screen, but these trees make a wonderful area. It's open. The kids love to go out there and play when it's not 110 degrees, and enjoy that area of the church. Putting anything else in there would certainly be devastating. I understand the need, and everybody needs, to have some revenue coming in from land. We just can't have acres of land sitting there vacant. This is the best use for everybody involved. It's manageable for the church. It's manageable for the children. And one thing that I did notice, and I've came to all these meetings before, so, you know, this isn't the first time I've stood up here and talked, but, you know, it was interesting, at the zoning meeting, one of the members sitting up there, and I'm sorry, I don't remember who, he said, hey, wait a minute, I've got this RV storage in my HOA community. Do you mean to tell me in my HOA community, I have this, I don't know, whatever they call it, this light industrial? And they're all, no. In HOA community, it's perfectly fine, as long as the HOA, you know, votes on that and says you can have it, you can have it. So, it's really no different than the same large vehicle storage that would be in a HOA community. It would be perfectly allowed. It's going to be low impact on the church. It's going to be low impact on the neighborhood. It's going to be great for the church, and it's going to be great for the kids, and it's going to be great for the trees. So, thank you for considering this request.
Thank you, sir. Next. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Patricia Johnston King. My address is 5226 Cretemore Lane. My family and I have been members of St. Mark's Episcopal Church since 1988. We had previously been on Lowell and Casey Road, and having sold that property, which is now the Carrollwood Cultural Center, we moved here after purchasing it in 2005 with our desire to create a welcoming community. Throughout the years, we've had discussions about how we could bring this to fruition with the preservation of the grounds and the neighborhood being foremost in our minds. This plan that we present for your approval allows us to keep three acres of land filled with greenery and have a storage lot that is located some distance from the road. Additionally, the nature of this plan does allow for less traffic going in and out and back and forth, drawing attention to the concerns of some of our neighbors as to the safety of their younger children and themselves. We have a thriving garden committee whose desire it is to keep the grounds at St. Mark's beautiful, not only for our congregation, but for the neighborhood in general and all who pass by. I hope that you will appreciate our commitment to this endeavor. We are grateful for the time permitted this evening for us to present this to you, and hope that you will strongly consider granting your support. We further extend a warm and sincere invitation to you all to come by and worship with us either of our Sunday services or on a Wednesday evening, if you're not swamped with the services that you so graciously provide for this county. We're alive in Christ, serving together, and we love you all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next. Good evening.
Scott Silverman, 4415 Ridge Line Circle, Tampa, Florida. A lot of the points I wanted to make have already been made, so I'm going to be pretty short. This, to me, is a really easy vote if we focus on what is in front of you and not on hypotheticals or parade of horribles that may come up. The plan is compatible with the area. Visually, you've heard about the barrier, and there'd be no site disturbances through the buffering and screening that's been provided. So, it's not going to impact the community sightlines. Environmentally, we're talking about parked vehicles here, no pollution or noise from parked vehicles, or no smell issues, so environmentally, it's sound, the proposal. You've heard about the traffic, that, again, we have parked vehicles. There's not going to be a lot of traffic created by the plan, and that the road is sufficiently wide for what we've proposed, so, like, traffic is not an issue here. And the plan calls for preservation and beauty of the environment and the trees. So, just looking at the plan as a whole, we believe it's a good plan, and we do appreciate your support this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here in support? We do have, looks like, an Ian and Renee Renton, and a Tammy and Tony Torres that signed up virtually. Are they still on the line? And if so, are you in support of the item?
No, not positioned.
This is Renee. I'm in opposition as well.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Can you speak up?
This is Tammy Torres. I'm in opposition.
Okay. We'll get to you in a moment.
This is Tammy Torres. I'm in opposition as well.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Now, it's time for opponent testimony. Is anyone here in opposition? We have a total of 10 minutes. Please come forward.
Thank you. Hi, y'all. My name's Kristen Cohen Barrett. I am, live in Woodmont, our lovely subdivision, at 5609 Piney Lane Drive, and I've been there for over 25 years. And I am also an experienced residential real estate agent. When we pass by from Gunn Highway to Kane Road, it is beautiful, but the desirous of having our homes being well-maintained in HOA is very important, as well as the road going to our HOA. And so, I will read specifically what's been shared with you already. Overall, the planning commission staff finds that the proposed planned amendment to be incompatible. It's been clear in the past two meetings, incompatible with the surrounding area. The result will not allow for development that is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And so, that recommendation is to find that the proposed future land use map designated change for the Hillsborough County FPA, pardon me, CPA 23-16 from residential to light industrial planned on the 3.87 acres is inconsistent with the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, and forward this recommendation to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Our home values and our neighborhoods deserve to be protected in a residential area, and we are here to ask you to take care of that for us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here in opposition? Good evening.
Excuse me. Is, are you Mr. Torres?
Correct.
I'm sorry, I don't have you as a party record. Did you speak at the zoning hearing, Master?
Yes, but my wife put me online to do virtual, but she didn't know I was going to show up. So, I am authorized to speak, but she didn't think I was going to be here in person. She was on the phone earlier.
Okay. So, you're speaking...
That's not the issue, sir.
Are you speaking on behalf of your wife, or is she going to speak as well?
No. She's going to speak as well.
I do not have Mr. Torres on the list of parties of record.
I just heard you say my name earlier. You said Anthony and Tony Torres.
I'm sorry?
I heard you say my name earlier. It said Tammy and Anthony Torres. I heard you.
I said the name.
Oh, okay. I heard him say the name.
I'm sorry. So, he's not on the list?
No, sir.
Is his wife on the list?
Yes. Ms. Torres is.
Okay. I'm sorry, sir, you're unable to speak this evening. We have to follow our stated procedures.
Okay. I understand.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience here in opposition? Okay. Ms. Torres, would you like to speak?
Yes. Yes. This is Tammy Torres. I live at 5614 Pine Bay Drive in Woodmont. I've been a resident for 25 years. I would like to add that my husband spoke at the land use hearings, therefore, we thought he was allowed to speak tonight. Thank you, Commissioners, for listening to our concerns this evening. I appreciate the church trying to generate more revenue, but not at the expense of our quiet streets and quaint residential neighborhoods. None of the church members there tonight, representing the church, live in the neighborhood and use Kane Road daily. The planning commission found this proposed plan amendment inconsistent and voted unanimously against it on February 12th. The zoning hearing master, Susan Finch, also recommended denial of the application on March 10th. Commissioners, we ask that you adopt the findings and recommendations of the planning commission, land development staff, and zoning hearing master and deny this rezoning. In the record, I've submitted photographs and posters of Kane Road that were presented at both the prior meetings. I hope that you've all reviewed them. Kane Road is a quiet, narrow residential street that connects to Gunn Highway but dead ends into our subdivision, which is .15 miles from the subject property. There are multiple issues with the proposed change. To name a few, inadequate turning radius to support the large vehicles proposed, like RVs, boat trailers, and the lack of access from Gunn Highway. The vehicles would utilize Kane Road to enter and exit the property. The access to the church would create a future right-of-way issue if the church were to sell. This property would be landlocked. The traffic increased, causing a major difficulty in the median on Gunn Highway, with all of the vehicles trying to pull in and out. The back of a, the, sorry, the lack of a shoulder on Kane Road, which would invariably mean damage to trees, light poles, traffic signs, and the newly inside sidewalks on Kane Road. We submitted a petition signed by 76 of our Woodmont residents, although the church said they received no objections from nearby residents. Prior to night, the church presented letters from neighbors in support, but these neighbors live on a neighborhood behind the church that never accessed Kane Road. Therefore, they would not be affected. I assume these are the adjacent nearby residents they are referring to. I would consider .15 adjacent and nearby, which the zoning hearing master did. Webster defines adjacent as very near a specified location. Commissioners, please find the proposed future land use amendment and rezoning from res four to light industrial inconsistent, and please disregard, disapprove this request. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is Ian or Renee Renton on the line?
Can I? Point of order, just, I'm just, for a second.
Yes, I am on the line.
Is this the CPA hearing? Because do they all get three minutes?
No, here they get a total of 10.
Okay. Because we're into the rezoning part of it?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Ms. Renton, please go ahead.
Thank you, Kristen. This is your time this evening. I'll be brief. I actually happen to live in the neighborhood behind Woodmont, behind the church in Indian Mike's. I've been here 24 years. Many of my neighbors, including those on Kane Road, have been here much longer than I have. I would like to say the church has been a very good neighbor, and I hope to continue the positive relationship with them. However, with that said, I don't feel like rezoning to light industrial is a fit for the neighborhood. It's a mostly residential area, with the exceptions of the church, the office buildings in front on Gunn Highway, and an orchid farm in the back. I don't feel light industrial is appropriate for the area. Personally, I already deal with parking lights coming through my fence. My property backs up right to the church, and it's not just during services. It's also during the week, as the church allows the office buildings to overflow parking there. There's a lot of, a lot of times, there's loud music. Most times, not intentional, people coming up to park, and they just happen to be pulling up directly in front of my backyard, but their music is loud, and I, like many people in Florida, enjoy outdoor living, but I don't always want to hear others' people, other people's music and noises. Last week, there was a truck parked outside my property, right behind in my backyard, running for a half hour. Loud, noisy, smelly. So, these are the things that happen near... And even long-term stores, they might be parked there, but when they come to pick up vehicles, RVs, especially if they're diesel, are noisy. Boats, dust, people clean, just the potential for noise is, I think, a lot greater than anybody realizes. If it's 24-hour access, lighting. So at the end of the day, if the property, I'm sorry, one more thing. If the property were ever sold, if it's rezoned light industrial, that could just open the door for any business that's just even less compatible with the neighborhood. So I would appreciate you taking this into consideration and have a nice evening and thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Now, is there Ian Renton on the line? Okay. This time, applicant...
I do not have an Ian Renton on the line.
Okay. Thank you. Applicant has a five-minute rebuttal.
Ms. Chairman and Commissioners, Todd Pressman, for the record, again, 202nd Avenue South, number 451 St. Petersburg. I did hear the lady's comments, and I think, again, it's comparable to having a 77-bed ALF at your back door, literally at a very short distance. You can imagine the amount of food trucks, linen trucks, employees coming and going, visitors, that are servicing 77 beds. That is tremendously more of an impact than this would ever be. We formally noticed 99 persons in the immediate vicinity, and I only, I thought, I only heard one woman speak online. And the woman here, I didn't catch her name. She's at 5609 Piney Lane, which is about 2,800 feet away. So it is, with all due respect to the young lady, it's a little bit difficult for me to understand how there's an impact 200 feet away in a separate subdivision over the ridge and through the woods to Grandma's house. It's very, very far away. So on all accounts, you have a tremendous representation on the record of abutting in nearby owners. We've noticed many, many, many times through this whole process, all the immediate neighbors. We appreciate your consideration and we appreciate your lead hours. Happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Planning Commission?
Gillian Massey with Planning Commission Staff. The subject site is in the urban service area and within the limits of the Greater Carrollwood-Northdale Community Plan. It's subject to HC CPA 23-16 to change the land use designation to light industrial planned. The site's in the urban service area and per Objective 1 of the future land use element, 80% of the county's growth is to be directed there. Future land use element policy 1.4 requires all new developments to be compatible with the surrounding area, noting that compatibility does not mean the same or same as. Rather, it refers to the sensitivity of the development proposals and maintaining the character of the existing development. The site is surrounded by single-family residential uses to the north, northeast, and west, and a religious establishment immediately to the south. The general vicinity, the general vicinity is mainly comprised of residential densities that range from four to six dwelling units per gross acre and allowable neighborhood commercial intensities averaging 0.25 floor area ratio. Therefore, the light industrial nature of the open storage use does not meet the intent of policy 1.4 in the Comprehensive Plan relating to compatibility. The proposed development is more intense in nature and will not allow the area to remain low to medium density in character. Therefore, the proposal is also inconsistent with future land use element Objective 8 in Policy 8.1. The proposed rezoning does not meet the intent of future land use, future land use element Objective 16 and some of the associated policies under that objective. Although the proposal includes a 90-foot setback with type C screening on the north boundary of the site, the western boundary is much closer to the single-family residential with only a 50-foot setback with type C buffer. The proposed storage area is proposed to be surrounded by a six-foot fencing. However, the setbacks and buffers alone do not allow for a gradual transition in intensity between land uses. There are significantly less intense uses, specifically the single-family neighborhoods that surround the site, that need to be protected per policy direction in the future land use element. Furthermore, the development of higher-intensity non-residential land uses that are adjacent to established neighborhoods shall be restricted to collectors and arterials and to locations external to established and developing neighborhoods per future land use element Policy 16.5. Because the proposed use is intensive and adjacent to the established residential neighborhoods, the request is inconsistent with this policy direction. The proposed major modification is within the limits of the Greater Carrollwood-Northdale Community Plan. The plan seeks to ensure that new development and redevelopment use are compatible with their design techniques to ensure the appearance, mass, and scale of the development is integrated with the existing suburban nature of each neighborhood. The proposed open storage use would make it extremely challenging to integrate into the suburban character of the neighborhood. Furthermore, the plan seeks to prioritize pedestrian circulation and facilities over vehicular improvements and to form a cohesive, connected, and integrated development pattern. The proposed open storage of vehicles would be more vehicular-focused than, rather than prioritizing pedestrians, and would not be cohesive and easily integrated with the surrounding single-family residential uses. Therefore, the proposal does not meet the intent of the community plan. And based on these considerations, Planning Commission Staff finds that the proposed major modification is inconsistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Hearing Master?
The zoning hearing master considered the proposed major modification request to an existing approved plan development, which is currently approved for a 77-bed type C community residential home. The major modification requests instead to develop an exterior open storage use of RVs, campers, travel trailers, motorhomes, watercraft, and automobiles. Two site plan options are proposed, which do not alter the proposed use, but rather provide for different access to the site. The request for the open storage land use is predicated on the approval of the pending Comprehensive Plan land use amendment, CPA 23-16, from residential four to light industrial, which is being heard concurrently with the major modification request. Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend denial of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Planning Commission Staff also does not support the major modification and found it inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan. The zoning hearing master noted that a light industrial land use, such as the open storage of RVs, vehicles, and watercraft, is inconsistent with the surrounding single-family residential development pattern. The reduction in the traffic generated by the open storage land use as compared to the approved 77-bed type C community residential home does not mitigate the compatibility issue presented by the open storage use being adjacent to single-family homes. For these reasons, the zoning hearing master found the request to be inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code and incompatible with the surrounding area. Therefore, the zoning hearing master recommended denial.
Commissioner Walston?
Adam, this is completely restricted to the very few lots. They can't convert this into some other light industrial application, where it's completely restricted.
The zoning would restrict it to the uses that would just read the open storage of vehicles, trailers, and RVs.
And 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. I guess the point is, we've dealt with this issue a lot, and this seems way less burdensome to the community than a 77-bed ALF. And I think that that's just one of those things where be careful what you ask for, because that's, that would be a lot of impact of ambulances and the food trucks and everything that go along with it was a good point. So I'm probably going to support the church for that reason. I believe that it is less impactful for the community.
Commissioner Owen?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I think you already answered the question. I just have to say the words. There's no live local issue because of the restrictions, correct?
The restrictions are what's permitted under the zoning. With the commercial zoning, it would have a commercial zoning designation. So outside of the zoning, couldn't say that live local is not, the zoning district is one that live local does apply to, being a commercial zoning district.
Okay. All right. It's not my district, so I'll sit back and listen.
Commissioner Cameron Spada?
Yes. It's tucked away in the back. It's quiet, as they mentioned. It's used for storage, so they're not going to be in and out all the time. So I will support this, so.
Commissioner Myers?
I'm going to move for approval.
Commissioner Kemp? All right. We got a motion to approve, Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Kemp. And I got to tell you something that I did struggle with. I'm very, very familiar with the area. It does have recommendations of denial, but it's a compelling argument that the applicant made and Commissioner Walston made. ALF is very intense use. And we talk about the hours and the additional traffic with the requested use. The trees are going to remain. It'd be less traffic. It's not, it's a quiet use. And I will say that, again, this came, I know we had a few folks that did come out in opposition, but these neighborhoods are very active. A few years ago, I mean, they're not shy about letting us know when they need something or oppose something. They, a dire need of a sidewalk a few years ago. And I think every person in both those neighborhoods emailed me and went out there, had several meetings. I'm very pleased I was able to get the funding. The board approved it, and we got a sidewalk. So I think the fact that we really only have a few folks that come out in opposition is, speaks volumes of the church's outreach and what a good neighbor that they are. Even the one individual that spoke in opposition said that they've been very good neighbors. So I am going to support the motion. I would just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I want to thank, you know, the members of the congregation for, you know, for being good neighbors. And in addition to that, as was stated, for just providing space and helping so many, you know, children and nonprofits in our community. So I want to thank you for that as well. So we have a motion to approve the CPA by Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Kemp. Please record your vote.
Motion carries 7 to 0.
I am now, can I have a motion on the rezoning?
Still moved.
Motion, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote on the rezoning.
Motion carries 7 to 0.
All right. Again, thanks, everyone, for coming out this evening. All right. So that concludes the Comprehensive Plan Amendment public hearing. We'll now begin the Land Development Code text amendment public hearing. This is the first of two public hearings. No voting is required, and brevity will be appreciated. So whenever we're ready to introduce the first item.
Commissioners, Israel Monsanto will present the items for staff.
Premier Commissioners, Israel Monsanto Development Services. This is the first public hearing of Round 1, 2024 Land Development Code text amendments. We have a total of nine items tonight. The first seven items were already presented at the workshop that we had last month. There are two new additional items, items A8 and A9. We'll go through them shortly. The first one is LDC 230138, vaping retail shop standards. This will add development standards to the location and permitting of the establishment that sells vaping products within 500 feet of public or private elementary, middle, and secondary schools. There have not been significant changes compared to the workshop presentation for this item. This amendment will require conditional use zoning permit to be approved for establishments within 500 feet of public or private schools. These shops will, within 500 feet of a school, will be permissible conditional use in commercial neighborhood, commercial general, commercial intensive manufacturing districts and planned developments, which permit uses allowed in the zoning districts above. It will prohibit vaping retail shops within more than 20% of its total monthly retail sales of vaping products within 500 feet of public or private schools. And these shops will, shops with more than 20% of its total monthly retail sales of vaping products located within 500 feet of public or private schools that were permitted use and in lawful operation by the effective date of this amendment would be deemed illegal non-conforming uses. And this concludes the first presentation.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing. Does anyone want to speak to this? Okay. Seeing nobody. We're not taking any action, so we'll move on to the next one. Thank you.
Second item is LDC 230311, Comprehensive Plan Amendments with Related Rezoning Applications. Planning Commission Resoning Reporting filing deadline. This amendment will modify the procedures for amendments to the official zoning outlets of the Land Development Code, specifically the consideration and final decision by the Board of County Commissioners when rezonies or major modifications, applications are related to applications to amendment of the future of the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. It will also modify the filing date for reports prepared by Planning Commission Staff for hearing applications, and this including official zoning outlets rezonies. It will establish that applications proceeding in accordance with the Land Development Code Part 1003 that are contingent on a request to amend the future, the future of Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan for only incorporate Hillsborough County will be deemed withdrawn and no further effect, in the event that such requested amendment to the future of the Comprehensive Plan is denied by the County Commissioners and no further proceedings or action will be required. This amendment will also eliminate, like, as I said, the 12 calendar requirement for the filing of report with administered by Planning Commission Staff for the LHO or ZHM applications. Instead, the filing of these reports will be in accordance with the hearing master's schedule adopted by the administrator. And that concludes the second item.
All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Seeing none. Let's keep rolling. A3.
Item A3, LDC 23312, yard waste air curtain incinerators. This will modify the standard for yard waste air curtain incinerators or ACI facilities. The amendment will distinguish between commercial facilities, which accept yard trash generated off-site for incineration, and those that are temporary and accessory to the clearing of land limited to the incineration of yard trash generated on-site only. I specify that commercial facilities will only be permissible as a conditional use in the commercial intensive and manufacturing zoning districts. The facility will be limited to the incineration of yard trash only, and open pile burning will be prohibited. It will also provide for minimum required setbacks along boundaries and roadways, increase yards from residential development or zoning, and also require screening by a solid fence. Facilities that are accessory or temporary to the land clearing of site development will be permitted in all zoning districts, subject to all local and stadium environmental requirements. There is also in your backup a second text option that will require a planned development rezoning for commercial facilities instead of a conditional use review and permitting approval. And this concludes this presentation.
All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to A4? All right. Seeing none. We'll move on to A5. And I know that the Lopez family is here. This would be your item. Go ahead.
Yes. LDC 240341, private road crossings reading authorization by rail line owner. This text amendment asks requirements for future development seeking private railroad crossings, including agritourism activities, to obtain written authorization from rail line owners. All new development, including agritourism activities crossing existing rail lines on private roads, will be required to provide written authorization to the county by the rail owner. The authorization from the rail owner will allow the opportunity to assess the type and amount of traffic that will be crossing the rail line to ensure the appropriate crossing controls are in place for safety purposes. This amendment will incorporate a change to the Land Development Code Section 60403 General Access Standards. And that concludes... LDC 240340, Leave Local Act Administrator Approval and Land Use Restriction Agreement Process. implements the Leave Local Act, recently created by Senate Bill 102, and establishes the standard and administrative procedure for new projects developed under the Leave Local Act and the Land Use Restriction Agreement. This project will still adhere to all other limitations and requirements containing the land development and the comprehensive plan and the proposed LDC regulations for multifamily developments in areas zone for such use. The amendment will also provide the criteria and development requirements for a project to qualify under the Leave Local Act in the county, consistent with the Leave Local statute. Establishes the procedure for the review of new Leave Local Act projects in the county and the submitted requirements by applicants and also internal process by Development Services Department staff and the Affordable Housing Services staff. This concludes this presentation.
All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to A4? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to A5, and I know that the Lopez family is here. This would be your item. Go ahead.
Yes, LDC 240341, private road crossings reading authorization by rail line owner. This text amendment adds requirements for future development seeking private railroad crossings, including agritourism activities, to obtain written authorization from rail line owners. All new development, including agritourism activities crossing existing rail lines on private roads, will be required to provide written authorization to the county by the rail owner. The authorization from the rail owner will allow the opportunity to assess the type and amount of traffic that will be crossing the rail line to ensure the appropriate crossing controls are in place for safety purposes. This amendment will incorporate a change to the Land Development Code Section 60403 General Access Standards. And that concludes this item presentation.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I know we have some speakers. Claudia, would you like to come forward?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Lopez, and my son Jacob Lopez was 17 years old and was killed seven months ago on this crossing in Plant City. They did not have the proper arms or flashing lights in place. My family's forever heartbroken and devastated. Losing a child is like pain like no other. My son Jacob was a straight A student, a junior in high school, and was enrolled in Duld and Roman at HCC. He's very gifted. He loved life, loved his family and friends. Six people were killed in that accident. A whole family was killed. Three were children, including my son. And three families were devastated that day, and just because there's no proper equipment. Hillsborough County has so many crossings that don't have the proper equipment, and I don't understand how that can be. Everybody's life is important. Just because it's a private road doesn't mean it shouldn't have crossing arms or flashing lights. The Hernandez family lost their lives that day, and so did my son. Three families were devastated. I believe every crossing should have flashing lights and arms. Every life matters. Thank you so much for listening to us.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else from the family that would like to come forward and speak? Ms. Lopez, could you come back up? Come on back up here for a second. I asked the chair if I could have a little leeway to speak to the family, and he said yes, but I guess I'm the chair right now since he's not in here, so I'll give myself some leeway. Thank you for coming here. I've sat with this family. This is an amazing family. And Jacob, even though I didn't get to meet him personally, just from talking with you, you kind of feel like you know him. He was an old soul. You know, his siblings kind of wanted, I think, more high-tech automobiles. He wanted an old Beetle, and he wanted to restore it. He just had so much potential that he was living up to. And, you know, I've attended too many of these funerals already as a county commissioner, and it's... I don't want to become an expert at this, but I'm starting to become one, and I can tell you that I know your heart's broken forever.
Forever.
I mean, I know it's broken forever. And I know that it's hard for you to find joy, that you almost feel guilty when you find it. That's a very common thread I find with mothers who have lost a son in a tragedy. But what I can tell you is, people of faith, I know you are, I know your family is, you know, I told you I would never use cliches with you, and I won't, but I will say this, that as people of faith, I know you'll walk with your son again. And what I have found with mothers and fathers and siblings who have lost somebody in a similar manner, because I've dealt with them, they have really found a testimonial, they found a memorial through advocacy, through advocacy for what you're doing right here today, that you're not just... You're not here for Jacob, you're here for what could happen after Jacob, correct?
Yes, yes.
So, I told you that I will continue to walk with you in this journey, and I will. I can tell you, I can speak on behalf of the board. That they have been supportive of these measures to try to make these passive intersections safer. And we talked about other entities that we have to deal with, CSX being one of them. We are very low on the totem pole when it comes to preemption when we're dealing with them, but I can tell you, and Mr. Goleman can, I think, back this up, they have been very responsive with this issue. I believe corporations, they're made up of mothers and daughters and sisters and uncles too, and I think that they see this. And again, I'm going to continue to walk with you on this. I know that I have the support of the board on this, and we just... I just really appreciate your courage. I appreciate your family's courage. You know, I know that Jacob loved Tampa. He loved this city, and he, you know, we're a worse place, we're worse off without him, for sure. But again, this legacy and his testimony as a memorial will live through the actions that you're doing here today, you and your family. And again, our hearts are broken with you, and we're going to be here for you through this whole process. So, thank you for being here today, and I know we'll see you at the next hearing, too. Okay, thank you.
Okay, next on? Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Owen, that was beautifully said. I just want to reiterate that, you know, it's late, and you all are here, and it's really important that we heard that story and that we make sure as a board that we see this through to fruition, because if there's anything we can do to prevent this from happening to another family, we're certainly going to do it. But again, you have our heartfelt condolences on your loss. And thank you again, Commissioner Owen, for your words.
All right, next item. LDC 240342, wetland setback reductions. This amendment refines the instances where wetland setbacks would provide functional protection to adjacent wetlands. It will remove the requirement for a wetland setback when wetlands are approved to be impacted, creating a new wetland line, and the changes to the site would not have untreated stormwater flowing through the otherwise applicable setback area to the wetland. It will also incorporate allowances for fences that do not impede the flow of water to be located within the wetland setback areas. It will permit pool screen enclosure to be located in portion of wetland setback areas where pools are currently allowed. Section 40107 of the Land Development Code will be updated with these changes, and this concludes this item.
All right, it's a public hearing. Anyone want to speak to this item? If not, A7.
Item 87, LDC 0343, irrigation plans revisions. This amendment aims to reduce duplicative irrigation designs by eliminating the need for developers to submit an irrigation plan for review during the site and subdivision application process. It would eliminate the requirement for applicants to submit an irrigation plan, increasing review efficiency and reducing duplicate efforts when designing the irrigation system. It will require that the irrigation design meets the Land Development Code design criteria attested by a Florida state licensed professional. This concludes this item presentation.
All right, it's a public hearing. Anyone want to speak to this item? Commissioner Wollstall.
I just wanted to say thank you very much. This is going to significantly reduce the costs that developers have in removing this simple task, so thank you for getting on it.
A8.
This item, Commissioners, this is the first of two new items presented, LDC 240662. This is fire rescue facilities and law enforcement facility design exceptions. This amendment would exempt county fires rescue facilities and law enforcement facilities from the building architectural design requirements when located in special districts. These facilities will be exempt from architectural standards found in Article 3 of the Land Development Code. It will also allow the administrator to approve changes to development standards requirements to the minimum extent necessary to accommodate the requirements needed to develop these facilities, and this exemption from the design requirements and standards will simplify and streamline the site and building permitting process for these facilities, which are intended to provide public safety and protective services to the county. This concludes this item presentation.
Anyone like to speak to this item? A9.
Last item, A9, 240663, county infrastructure projects alternative site development review process. This amendment will allow concurrent review of site design, which is permitting along with the project construction with the building, and establish the review procedure for said concurrent review and construction process for counties' capital projects. Projects will still be subject to the existing design and construction standards establishing the county's Land Development Code while recognizing the flexibility needed for their design-build process. LDC Section 100106, site development plan review procedures will be modified, adding a new subsection for exemption for county projects review procedures. This concludes this presentation.
It's a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to the item? Okay, that concludes the first of two LDC public hearings, and now we'll start our final meeting of the evening, Land Development Code text amendment workshop. And who's going to introduce that?
I'll just, just for the interest of time, I'll speak to this very briefly. This proposed amendment is... would implement the one-water changes. It mirrors the language that's proposed in the plan, as well as provide a process for the board exception process. This amendment will be updated to reflect the action that the board took tonight and excluding the Keystone Odessa Community Plan from these exceptions. So, that, when it comes to the public hearing in June, will update that language consistent with the board's action tonight. Available for any questions.
You weren't kidding about being quick. All right, good job. Any questions, comments for Adam, workshop? If not, thanks for everyone's patience, and we're adjourned.